All the meeting to order, if Clerk Segrist could please call the roll.
All right, trustee Anthony.
John did call me about a half hour ago. His wife had another biopsy today. Things are not going well, so he's home taking care of Gloria right now.
Foster.
Good evening.
Trustee Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Clerk Segrist in attendance, Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
Present.
And Supervisor Williams.
Good evening. Call for a motion to adopt the agenda with one change, and that is to add G zero, a resolution regarding racism.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, those in favor of the motion as presented, say aye.
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 Roll call, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Zoom roll call.
Yes.
Graham Hudak.
Yes.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Call for approval of the minutes of the June 9th, 2020 meeting as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Graham Hudak.
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Anne Williams.
Aye. Now would be the time in our agenda for any citizens' non-agenda items. If anybody would like to make public comment, now would be the time to do that. And if you're on the phone or cellphone, if you hit star nine, that'll send a flag to Mr. Segrist, who will give you the ability to be heard. Or if you raise your hand, if you're on the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, now is the time for public comment.
Supervisor, I have one, and I have a couple of individuals who have raised hands. I also have two statements as well, but Ms. Steel had her hand up, so I will promote to, let's see here, I will allow to talk. Wendy, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so this is public comment. Please limit to three minutes on an item that is not on the agenda. Now would be the time. So please do share. Michael, you did give authorization to who? What's that?
Wendy Deal. She should be unmuted and ready to speak.
Ms. Steel? Ms. Steel, would you like to make comments, public comments?
Okay. There is an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak as well.
I'd like to call for public comment at the end as well then.
So we'll go to the next?
Please.
Okay. This is a phone number, seven three four eight nine five nine zero three five. Going to.
And maybe if we could just read the last four.
Yes, that's, hello.
Hello.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. This is out. This is Wendy Deal. I'm actually, my Zoom doesn't work on the computer, so I'm calling from my phone. So I would just like to talk about the slow reopening of the summit and some of the other facilities in the Canton Township area here. I'm really kind of a proponent of a slower opening for a variety of reasons. And I sent a letter to the trustees, as well as the supervisor and the treasurer a couple of weeks ago. So I'm just going to read part of that to you right now. I mostly said that I was happy about the fact that the library is slowly opening and taking things at a pace that allows them to catch up and do paperwork and, you know, manage and process things that have been left behind for the last couple of months. And that gives them a few more days, buys them a little bit of time to, you know, actually feel the pulse of where we're going with this pandemic. But I'm mostly concerned about opening the summit because I do feel that physical distancing and that wearing masks are going to be very, very difficult to do. We already know that there's a lot of respiration that happens when you physically work out. There's going to be wet masks as a result and no masks as a result. And I, we just know that those two things are really critical things right now as far as keeping the pandemic down, keeping the coronavirus from spreading. The other thing I wanted to add to it, and I'm actually not going to read my email because I think you all got it, but the other thing I wanted to add is that there have been at least a couple of studies done, or I should say surveys done, a survey by, let me see, Morning Consult, that says only about thirty percent of people, thirty percent of the American citizens who do work out are willing to go back to a gym. And then Canada's Ipsos poll also said that only twenty-nine percent are willing to go back to a gym right now. So those are two indications right there that it might not even be feasible, you know, financially, economically for the summit to open. And then another Morning Consult survey also said that out of five hundred and eleven epidemiologists that were surveyed, and that's about a ten percent sample, that only fourteen percent of them would be willing to go to a gym this summer. And forty-two percent might think about it in three to twelve months. So I just think it's enough feeling that it's probably not going to be a well-received thing, except for some people who are gung-ho. I don't think it's going to be a safe thing to do. And I think too, that if you were to open too quickly and then have to close down again, that that might not be economically a great thing to do. So I just wanted to give you my input, my feelings about maybe doing a slow reopen with the summit. And that's it.
Kat, you're muted.
Yeah, we kind of segwayed into the, our first calendar item, which is the, our study session on the financial updates, which does include a piece of some of the reopening plans when we do reopen. So if there's additional public comment, what I'd like to do related to the topic of opening township facilities in the future, what I would ask is that we hold those off until after the presentations by Director Trumbull and Director Owenberger. But if there's any other public comment at this point not related to that topic, now would be the time. So do we still have any other hands raised there, Mike?
I have one hand raised, but it was raised prior and has been lowered. So it sounds like that was.
Very good.
I have, okay, looks like we have Mr. Reese, Walter Reese, I'm going to allow to talk. If you want to unmute yourself, you will be able to make. Press spacebar or, there you go.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I am, my name is Walter Reese, and I'm calling on behalf of the DCFC West Youth Soccer Club. Three main items that we wanted to share with you all for, from our organization. Canton Club is committed to the safety of our two thousand plus players and families. We are following the guidelines as provided by the governor and our sanctioning bodies, like the MSYSA, based on the direction they get from their subject matter experts. Examples that MSYSA had partnered with University of Michigan to develop a safe return to play. Second point, we currently understand the hesitation in opening indoor facilities to program. However, even the governor has opened facilities like High Velocity for Summer Camps, local gyms, et cetera, will open from this Thursday. That said, outdoor facilities, like all the soccer fields in Canton, should be prepared and open for games soon. Third point, based on our current data, we expect the governor to move the entire state, including lower Southeast Michigan, into Phase Five before July 4th, target seems to be six twenty-nine. With that plan, the MSYSA is preparing its safe return to play beyond the current social distancing guidelines, allowing scrimmages in games as well. We've proactively shared our current safe return to play plans with CLS in preparation. We expect the township to follow the state guidelines and not place limitations and exceed the state government or our associates' policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, at this point, I think it would make sense, Michael, if Wendy could lead us through her presentation. Greg, follow on, because I think if there's any additional public comment, it's probably going to be related to the materials that Greg will be presenting, I believe.
I have one item that is not related to the COVID and facilities. All right, this is a statement from Edward Pruitt. "The Ministry of the Three Hundred, an arm of E. Pruitt Ministries LLC, stands for the citizens of Canton. We believe that all citizens should have a right to peaceful living and interactions in Canton. Stories are vast concerning poor treatment of citizens and visitors, and this must change. Although Canton has demonstrated positive movement in a few areas, we stand for long-term sustainable change, especially in oversight for transparency and accountability. We stand with supervisors, speaks, public statement unequivocally, and position the same items as the top priority items. One, implementing Citizens Oversight Commission with independent investigative authority. Two, all CPD personnel, I believe it's Canton Police Department personnel, not just officers, participate in de-escalating, de-escalation trainings quarterly. Three, review the and restructure use of force policy and racial profiling by CPD, and stand against school-to-prison pipeline by not arresting minors with citizen oversight. Four, board of trustees to enact policies that restrict police brutality and misconduct. Five, hire a diversity specialist in covering the entire government of Canton Township and government entities with diversity requirements for contractors and contracted companies. Six, review all past cases of excessive force and hold officers accountable who have two or more complaints with citizen oversight. Seven, monthly public reporting by citizens of, by category of citizen complaints against officers. Sincerely Pastor Edward Pruitt, the Ministry of the Three Hundred, and Arm of E. Pruitt Ministries LLC."
And just for the record, also, Mr. Pruitt led the march today at Canton Center, Michigan Avenue, and Chad appears is back early, so that it appears that things are going well, continue to go well in their protest today. So Chad, Chad and Craig have been ongoing dialogue with Mr. Pruitt from Lebonia. So thank you, Michael. Is there no other non-related, related public comment? Wendy, we'll kick it over to you for presentation. Diane, I'm sorry. Payment of the bills?
About that. Yeah, Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Support.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye by roll call.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudak?
Aye.
Segrist, aye. Slavens?
Aye.
Snyderman?
Aye.
Well, Williams?
Aye. Diane, thank you. It's easier to kick me when you're sitting right next to me. Thanks for the reminder. I appreciate that. Wendy, now we'll turn it over to you.
Perfect. Okay. Can you guys see the presentation up on the screen? Okay. Perfect. All right, so based on some of our conversations that we've had and some of the, some of the questions from the trustees, I wanted to walk you guys through a high level of the financial projection that I did based on some of the closures that we have and some of the known items that we have where we're losing revenue, where we're going to save some costs and expenses and whatnot. So we thought it'd be helpful for you guys to take a look through all of this information as well. I'm sorry, I'm trying to promote my, move my slides and it's not. There goes. All right, is it working?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, so how we got here. So probably, it was probably about a month ago or so, a few weeks ago at least anyways, the leadership teams, so the directors and the HR manager, we all sat down as a group of people and we met it, and the full-time electeds met at length to discuss what the operational needs were of the various departments. You know, there were some challenges. Some of the departments were obviously slower, you know, when we're closed. So, you know, Village Theater's been closed, some of those items, some of those activities are much slower, but other areas are still hopping, like building permits and things are still being developed. So we sat around and we talked about what the different operational needs were with the different departments. We talked about the appropriate timing to open the different township buildings, so everything was closed. But obviously, you know, there's governor orders that have shut down facilities. There's other considerations such as, you know, if we do open, you know, are people even going to want to come back? And are expenses going to be higher if we do open? And we're not going to collect the revenue? And what's safe for everybody? And then really, what are, what are the known and unknown financial impacts? So things that we know right now, we already know from the state of Michigan that our state shared revenue, which is the revenue we receive from sales tax collections, people aren't buying as much right now. So we already know right off the bat that our state shared revenue is going to be down about $700,000 out of an $8 million revenue line item. So it's almost a ten percent decrease right there on one line item alone. But then there's also the unknowns. Really, you know, if we open, our people are going to come back. Are we going to get the same level of revenue? If we open up, what is our expenses going to be? Are they going to be just as high? Or there's, this is such an unusual time, obviously, we don't really know. We don't have the history to look at to know what's really going to happen at this point in time. So as a result of those discussions, the leadership group came up with a detailed restoration of operation plan, which was intended to serve as a guideline when the operations are being restored, in the process of being restored. So that document went out sometime in May, went out to all the staff, kind of as just a safe, as a safety guidelines. What are we going to do? What are we thinking about? We're taking the employee, all the employees' temperatures before they enter into the building. Now that the Township Administration Building is open on a limited basis to the public, we have temperatures being taken of the public who is coming into our building and asking the questions. We're limiting the amount of bodies that can be in here at any one point in time in the administration building from the public's perspective. Using that restoration of operations plan, a detailed phased approach of opening was prepared for each township location. So each location then has a five-phased, state of Michigan obviously has a six-phase approach. We did hours before the state came out with theirs, so we stuck with our five-phase approach. But in the end, at the end of the day, the intention is the same. Basically, where are we in the process? Just because we might be in one phase doesn't mean the summit's in the same phase or Village Theater or the Sports Center. So all the locations have a different phase based on where we are as far as the level of operation that we are providing, of service we're providing. So that was provided. But my role, and Greg's going to talk a little bit about, more about that when he gets to his piece, so I'm not going to touch on that as much. But my piece is really talking about the financial projections. And so what I did was I tried to project and appreciate how difficult it is to project so many unknowns at this point in time. But I projected financials based on the different opening dates that we currently have in place at the various locations. So looking at the revenue, I already touched on the state shared revenue that we're about, we're estimated to be about $700,000 below the budget. And that's just what the state told us as of May, based on their projections in May fifteenth. I believe there's another conference call with the state of Michigan in another couple of weeks. So I'm, hopefully they'll have some more detailed information, but as of May, this is the best information that they have provided. Building permit revenue, we, when I did the projections, I conservatively estimated to lose about two months of revenue because we were closed for two months. We thought, all right, we're closed for two months. Is it really going to get caught back up? Are people going to be issuing more bonds or get more permits for buildings, excuse me? Or is it just going to, we're going to lose that two months of revenue and then the rest of the year will be status quo? Well, we're actually budgeting or expecting to finish the year about $600,000 less than last year. We actually budgeted building permits very conservatively this year, so we're actually projecting to finish about $150,000 higher than budget. So it's good from budget, not compared to prior year, but that's actually going to be okay compared to the budget that was adopted by the board. Property taxes revenue, we collect all of our property taxes in January for our year. Our property taxes for 2020 are expected to come in at budget, and really for 2021, because those taxes, the taxes that go out and on December 1st, that's based on the property tax values of December of nineteen. We already know what those property tax values are. So assuming the millage rate stays the same, we already know that our property tax revenue will also come in at the anticipated preliminary budget that the board saw last year for 21, but we're not talking about 2021 at this point in time. So the revenue, those are the big revenue items that, that make up a good chunk of it in the general fund. For the revenue for the other locations, it's a little bit trickier to forecast, but I assumed that we would only collect fall league revenue for the Sports Center at this point in time. The plan was to open up and August 1st for the fall leagues. So I projected revenue for the fall only, for the Sports Center. For the summit, I projected that we're going to open up October 1st. So with that revenue, just to give you a heads, like an indication, we're basically closed for six months. So I said, we're, revenue would come in at about fifty percent of the summit because we were closed half of the year. The theater, I only have, I only projected revenue that was received through March. And after that, the only additional thing that I accounted for was the rental revenue that we received from the church that currently rents that facility out. However, I projected forty weeks of rental revenue. At that point in time, we, I was expecting, or I had known that the church was not in there for three months. I think it might actually be four months by the time they get back in. I don't think they're planning on starting until mid-July. And we get about $1,000 a week from them for that. The recreation department, I estimated basically, so there's a lot of things in the recreation department. There's the summer programs, which we aren't having. There's the different special events. So the next special event that is really scheduled, that hasn't been canceled at this point in time, is the Halloween Trick or Treat Parade. I think that's what it's called. So that would be like the first real revenue. So what I did for the recreation, I said, what did we collect so far? Plus, what's the historical October through December revenue? And I counted that. And the Sports Center here again, I did say, I assumed only the fall league revenue, but that ended up at the end of the day being about a third of their typical revenue that they would collect in, in any year. So those are my assumptions on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, I looked in detail at the salaries, wages and fringes, and that approximates fifty percent of the total general fund expenses as, for salaries, wages and fringes. I assumed at this point in time that all full-time staff in, who are in the workshare program, will be in the workshare program through July 31st. We know that's not the case in all the departments, though. So since I've done this projection, we know there's some departments that had needed to bring their staff back. Building is very busy, so they had to pull some of their employees out of the workshare program. The clerk's office is ramping up for the election, and they're going to need to pull their employees out of the workshare program to make sure the election can go off. There's some statutory duties that we have that we can't afford to not, not go off well. So some of these aren't, some of, some of the employees will not be in the workshare the entire time. I also reviewed all the open positions and looked at those to see when we might be filling those. So we have an open planner position, for example. There's an open position in the clerk's department. There's the theater position that is open at this point in time that is unfilled. So I looked at those and tried to estimate when we may or may not fill those position. Part-time staff are laid off at this point in time until we're opening the various locations. When we do open the locations, we would have to start that hiring process, which takes time, but we'd have to bring them in before we'd open a couple of weeks. So we would have some, some extra expenses before the revenue would hit if and when we open these locations. But the only part-time staff that I have accounted for right now are the golf course, some of the golf course part-time staff and the parks staff who are back mowing. And I also were, was able to project out the medical, dental and prescription drug costs and feel pretty comfortable with those. A lot of the other costs, though, when you're looking at, you know, five months into the year, five to six months in the year, are pretty hard to determine at this point in time how much of that we're going to actually spend, because each department has their own plan. So for example, we know right now our sidewalk program is moving. So I know all those professional service expenses are going to hit. So this other services in charge, there's supplies, debt service and transfers out to the other funds. I all assumed that those projections were going to be what the budgeted amount was, with the following caveats. The Village Theater, I projected the expenses, we're going to range from about twenty-five to fifty percent of the budget, depending on what those are. We know we're going to still have the utility costs, so those are, you know, closer to a hundred percent of the budget. But there's other items such as the contractors, we might be, we might be paying to come in to do the performances. We know we're not going to pay those. So just depending on the expenses, overall those expenses range from twenty-five to fifty percent of the budget. Canton Sports Center, those expenses range from fifty to seventy-five percent, based on the history and the fact that we're closed until August. I don't think that any of those expenses would change drastically, the projections, if I was off a little bit. So those are what I used for there. Recreation, that was a harder, there's a lot of different sub-departments. But for the most part, I averaged whatever the year-to-date figures were, plus whatever the historical October to December expenses were. Capital outlay, now the capital outlay in the general fund is not the same thing of what the capital outlay is in the CIP plan that we talked about. The CIP plan was the infrastructure that we were going to issue debt for. Capital outlay in the individual funds were not things we were going to issue bonds for. So for example, we have some vehicles, some vehicles that we had already said we were going to purchase back in January before all this hit. So there's capital items that I just put in at the budget amount because we had already committed to purchasing some things. However, we were able to defer a couple of vans in the Parks Department. And I talked to IT, and there's just a few, a couple of projects in particular that we know because of the closure, we don't have time to get to. So I adjusted those numbers as well. And then the transfers out, again, I projected those expenses and those transfers out are to, for the summit, for the Community Improvement Fund. We have debt payments, we have to make to Community Improvement Fund for our debt, and the golf course, that we know we have to subsidize that as well. So I assume that those were going to equal the budget. So now comes the fun numbers, and I don't, hopefully you guys can see these on your screen. If you're looking on a phone, I apologize because it's pretty little. But I'm going to focus really on the, I don't know if I can get over to, hopefully you can kind of see my mouse over here. I'll try to point at it. I have twenty, 2017 actuals, 2018 actuals, 2019 actuals, and then I've got 2020. This is the actual amount when I started running this report, which is back in May, end of May. This is the amended budget for 2020, and then I've got the projected amount in the last column here. So overall, the total revenues, I'm just going to focus on these last three columns, two columns really, the projected, the amended budget for 2020 was about $27.9 million. And I'm projecting that we're going to have about $25.9 million of actual revenue. So we're going to finish under budget, based on my projections. Going down the line, the taxes, like I said before, I projected to come in at budget. The charges for services, we have budgeted here at $7.9 million, but I'm projecting at 6.7. A lot of that is the intergovernmental charges that we have, that we charge the other funds for the services for the general fund. That's a big chunk of it. But that's where a lot of the leisure services revenue hits, is in that line item. So I'm projecting for that to finish about $1.2 million under budget. Federal grants, I have in here, it's a small dollar amount, about $2,2300. The state grants, this is where I've got the $700,000 decrease for the state shared revenue, going from eight point two to seven point four million. Licenses and permits, this is where I said I think we're going to finish about $150,000 higher than the budget for building permits. And the rest of the line items are fairly consistent. At the interest and rental line item here, this goes from $478,000 to $295,000. That's some of the rentals for the Village Theater and the Pavilion rental, if you will. On the expense side of things, we had $30.8 million budgeted of expenses. However, I'm projecting that the actual expenses are going to come in at $27.7 million. So I've got the salaries and wages we had budgeted for 10.7 million, but with the workshare program that we have and furloughing employees, I'm projecting our salaries to come in at about 9.1 million. Our fringe benefits, I'm only projecting to come in about $170,000 under budget, about 4.9 million to 4.8 million projected. The other services and charges, this is, this is where some of those other line items for, you know, we've got the utilities that are coming in here. you know, we've got the utilities that are coming in here, but we also have the professional service, professional services for like the sidewalk program that hits here. I'm projecting we're going to finish that under budget by about nine hundred thousand dollars. Supplies a little bit under, capital outlay, I've got a little bit less as well. Debt service, we have to pay our debt service, so that's equals what our budget is. And then our transfers out, as I said, I I projected to be the same. But in the end, we had budgeted to use fund balance of two point eight million dollars this year. So if you recall, we historically budget very conservatively. So we budgeted to use two point eight million dollars. Based on my projection, I think we're going to only use one point eight million dollars. So that's, that's good. I'll show you here, though, if you look at the history. This is our budgeted from twenty fifteen through twenty nineteen, actually. What we budgeted to use a fund balance each of these years and what we actually used or added to fund balance each of these years. So you can see for the last five years, it has ranged from three, three point four million to five point five million dollars better than budget because we just budget conservatively at the end of the day. So while we, I don't think we're going to finish five million dollars, we're fairly confident to say we're not going to finish five million dollars better than budgeted. I still think we're positioned to finish better than budgeted. And our, like I said, our budget for twenty twenty was expecting to use fund balance to two point eight million dollars. So I think we're, whatever happens, whatever the board decides, you know, even if we had some little fluctuations here and there with some of, you know, the projections or we decide to stay closed or we open earlier, we close longer, whatever we do, I think we can weather the storm for the, for the rest of twenty twenty at least. If this can goes out longer than that, you know, we might have some more conversations that we need to have. But I think compared to where we thought we were going to finish, I think we're still going to be in good shape. Now I want to show you after the audit, I showed you this slide when we talked about the CIP. But I showed it to you, obviously, the audit wasn't done when I showed it to you. And at the end of twenty twenty-three, when I did the five-year projections, at that point in time to show you with the capital, the CIP plan that we had had, we thought our fund balance total at the end of twenty twenty-three was going to be twelve percent. Based on this new projection, because we finished twenty nineteen better than we had anticipated, we're actually looking like we would finish twenty twenty-three, assuming we still issue the CIP the same way, which is another conversation that we're going to have to have. But assuming we issued the debt into the CIP that we initially showed the board earlier, I think our fund balance is going to be twenty percent as opposed to the twelve percent that we talked about previously. So as far as the financial from my, from what we've been working on, I continue to look at these projections as new information comes in. I'm updating them, not necessarily daily, but I am updating them as we and looking at them as we're talking about what, what the timing is to open and close things. Our intention is to bring back before the board in the next board meeting, I think it's July fourteenth at this point in time, the CIP plan and see what the board's comfort level is for issuing debt. We do need to talk about issuing debt for the fire station. We have to, we had planned on issuing debt for about two point five million dollars, and the fire station is still being constructed. So at a minimum, we need to issue the debt for the two and a half million dollars. But the rest of the projects, we were going to plan on bringing back before the board and talking about in a couple of weeks to see what the board's comfort is with that. And then we're continuing to review the long-term cash saving options as well. As far as staffing goes, where we could, if there's anywhere to save cash for staffing things, if when positions are retiring, we continue to look for those to see if they're still needed or if we can, you know, change the, change the, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm fumbling over my phone words right now, but redistribute the work, see what positions are truly needed. And in some of the union conversations, they've talked about whether early retirements are an option. So we, you know, we're, we're not really leaving any stone unturned at this point in time as far as cash saving options. And the one last thing before I will open up for questions for anybody for my part, this does not include the police and fire. The police and fires revenues are really not impacted for twenty twenty. They're largely property taxes and the ambulance fee revenue. And so their revenue is really not impacted at this point in time. So there's, there's no significant negative impact for those ones at this point in time. Any questions for me before Greg talks?
That would be the time for trustee questions. I got Anne Marie, I see your hand is up, Anne Marie, you're muted right now. No, you're good.
Thank you, thank you. So, and I want to ask a couple of questions. So you talked about property taxes, you know, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one in terms of we're being okay, but when do you think this shortfall will hit, what year?
So the soonest it will hit would be twenty twenty-two. So at this point in time, from my brief conversations with the assessor, there hasn't been a significant impact on the market values of the homes yet. But should there be a downturn in the fall? The property tax values for our twenty twenty-two budget year are based on taxable value of December of twenty. So if the market takes a turn this fall, I would say we would see an impact in twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You talked about transfers out also. You've listed the summit, Community Improvement Fund, golf course. What about, I thought the theater was also one of the transfers out, isn't it?
The theater is part of the general fund, so the theater, we just, typically, it's just part of the regular general fund revenues that helps to subsidize that. But that's a department within the general fund, not a separate fund. But we typically, that subsidy for the theater averages, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's about three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, thank you. Could you put up the slide that shows the twenty-five year projections? The one just before this one, sorry. Actually, one more, one more back. This one, thank you.
You're welcome.
Here, your projected amount then is your twenty-five point nine million projected would change. Is that assumes, is that the closures? Is that what that means, you're assuming closures with the projected amount?
Yep, the projected amount is assuming that the theater is not opening through the rest of the year, other than for the church revenue that we get. It's assuming that there's no activity for the recreation revenue for the rest of the summer. And the sports center also is recorded in here, and that's assuming that we don't open up the sports center until August.
August first, okay. And then one line item here you have is contributions and donations. It went from hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred to your projected amount of fourteen thousand five hundred. Is that from program fees and is that what that's part of?
The country, that contribution was, I have to, let, let me get back to you on that. If, if you don't mind, I can look at that during Greg's presentation and I can let you know for sure what that represented. I think off the top of my head, that might have been money for the Wayne County Parks Village. Let me double check what that's for, though, because I'm, I can't, I don't know off the top of my head what I, what that was from.
Okay, so then, thank you.
I take that back. Part of that was contributions for the seat donations, the theater seat donations, I know.
Sponsorships.
Oh, sponsorships for, for Liberty Fest Two, which we wouldn't have had.
And other programs, yeah.
Okay, okay, so, okay. So then what we're going to see then, so you gave us these projections. So I assume when Greg is going to show us by phased openings, how that would change these numbers, is that correct?
So Greg has, I think, I don't know what Greg for sure was going to show you. Greg was going to, Greg has some numbers I know specifically for the sports center on what, you know, kind of a quick and dirty calculation of how much that would change these numbers. But as an overall, I think any little change that, nothing that we do is going to have a significant impact on what the projected numbers would be. So if any of these things vary by a hundred thousand dollars, your a hundred thousand dollars on a three hundred, a three million dollar budget isn't going to drastically change the outcome of these numbers. So we don't have them down to really necessarily the, you know, by the location. But Greg does have, at least if he wasn't going to show it, he has a prepare where he can talk to it for the sports center, what that opening would do.
Because there's, there's so many unknowns here and so many variables that are being guesstimated based on the information available. So Wendy's direction was very clear, and that was take the information from the leadership team full-time dates that were identified as when things might be opening back up and then taking into account that it's not going to be a full open when it happens. It'd be phased in, ramped back up. And I think the rest of the conversation is, okay, if we do open, how is that going to happen? And at some point, the board is going to have to come to a consensus or agreement at some level that says, okay, the dates we've identified to open up makes sense, or they don't make sense. And that's going to be a whole nother discussion, probably maybe with our next study session with CIP too, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. And, and one more question, I don't know if you're going to go into detail here, but you did talk about the work share and the staffing. And we know that the clerk's office has to ramp up quickly. And when will, what's the timeline for deciding on those open positions? Because one of them, I believe, is in the clerk's office, and we do have that election coming up.
I, I don't know if Kireen's on and prepared to talk. Based on our leadership meeting that we had earlier today with, with everybody, and if Michael's on, he might be able to speak up. I believe Kireen is works on getting that posted soon. Michael?
Yeah, so what is not included in the costs here would be the fact that we will be posting the clerk three position from the clerk's office this week, and that is, should be filled by June sixth. So that would be the entire month to a month and a half that that position would be filled, and there would be a cost there. And there is, I believe additionally, I believe I was told in LOA with the TPOAM Union letter of agreement that would allow for the continuing part-time person to come back as well. So what I would essentially be looking at is one point five additional FTE in my, in my department. Those will probably be savings that are budgeted that in this model that are not going to be, going to be realized. I think there's also continuing part-time. Was it in, was it in building or was it a DPW that was?
It's in building.
So I'm not the only one.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And, and Michael, that also does not include, Michael, let us know that there is some money that we will be getting reimbursed from the state for some of the elections, and that revenue is not accounted for in here. So I would guess that the, the reimbursement that we're going to get from the state is going to more than make up for the cost addition that was not accounted for over the next month.
Okay, because I can't see, oh, no, I do see Steve's hand, yes, Steve, go ahead.
Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Wendy, for the presentation. Couple of questions. I heard, I think we all did, last week, some discussion of eight hundred thousand dollars from the state that came from federal cares money, and is that included in here? Do we know how much of that?
So we, that doesn't, that doesn't get passed along to us.
Oh, okay.
Necessarily. Yeah, no, there's, there's some grant money that we can apply for that we're looking into. But at this point in time, that would go to police and fire, and we're, we're not talking, this is specific to the general fund, not.
Yeah, okay. I see. The seven hundred thousand dollars for state shared revenue, is that, do you know if they're estimating that based on everything starting to open up and sales continuing through the rest of the year?
You know, they projected out, you know, so they had a, their revenue sharing conference, and it was May fifteenth that they held that. And that's an annual conference that they have just to see where they think they're going to end up. Not sure how they base that. I would venture to guess that it's slightly optimistic if I, if I, I would not be surprised if these numbers get estimated down a little bit, you know, or come down a little bit once in another month or so, once.
When do we usually get that state revenue?
We get them every other month.
Oh, so, okay.
Yeah, so we, so it's basically, they base their state shared revenue bi-monthly, and then we get it the payment like a month and a half after whatever their time is on, on what they get it. So our revenue sharing, the majority of our revenue sharing is constitutionally based. So they are required to pay a certain percentage to us. It's a weird percentage. They are required to pay us fifteen percent of what used to be the four percent state share or the sales tax that was collected. So that, that law was put into place when the, when the sales tax was four percent. When they revised the sales tax to six percent, they basically said they're still only going to pay us fifteen percent of a four percent sales tax. So it's basically whatever they end up collecting. And they also have to guess what are, how much are people going to buy? You know, there haven't been cars sales, so that's a big sales tax number. Things are going down now, the state, on that conference call that I had, the state's budget, they are expecting to fall short, like three point two billion dollars short. So about three hundred thousand dollars of our revenue sharing is statutory, which means the state can make a decision whether they're going to give it to us or not. So I did decrease that a hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty, just assuming if the state's got to come up with three point two billion dollars, they, they're going to have to cut it from somewhere. So I assume that our statutory piece is going to go down a little bit.
And what I've heard in every meeting, I have attended conference with Western Wayne and with Haley Stevens and the other groups, is every time the state says something, the numbers get worse, they have never gotten better. So they are like we are doing, looking at everything on a, on a ongoing basis and making adjustments on the fly. You're muted, Steve.
All right, I let go of the spacebar, I guess. The, I guess, I, I just wanted to hear your thoughts on that, so thank you. And then lastly, on the different venues that we were talking about, the summit, the theater, the sports center, and kind of what Anne Marie was asking, can we get, like you mentioned, the theater, we subsidize three hundred thousand a year. If, if we're not opening that this year, if we choose not to, I understand. But if we do, that, will that subsidy go up? You know, how much more, especially if we can't sell as many tickets? Same for the summit, if we open it October first, are, are we looking at the subsidy for that to be more each month than it usually is because we can't have or won't have as many paying customers there? Could mainly because some people won't come back and some people, and then we will have to require certain protocols that will maybe say, keep as many people from using it. So each of these venues, is it, is there a way to understand how much we subsidize per month? And then how much more we'd have to subsidize if we open them up slowly, that type of thing?
I think, I think Greg and I could probably talk to, try to get some decent, you know, kind of looking into a crystal ball to give you numbers on that. It, it's difficult because there are certain things that are going to happen at the facility, whether we're open or not. So things break when we're still closed, so they'll have to get fixed. More things probably need to be fixed when we're open, but there are certain things that still have to, some expenses we're going to occur whether we're open or whether we're closed. And it's going to be really difficult for us to know how many people are going to be comfortable. For example, Wendy Deal in the, in the beginning was talking about this, this, the survey that was done that said thirty percent of the people's, only thirty percent of the people said they'd go back to the gym. We, we just don't know, there's just certain things we don't know what is going to happen at this point in time. But, but I think Greg and I could probably sit down, you know, Greg pulled up some numbers, I came up with some numbers. They're probably in the ballpark of the same, but if, if you guys want some of those numbers, Greg and I can sit down and try to come up with something. And it can be very difficult for us to know, like, well, if we open up the sports center in July, what does that mean? It might mean ten thousand dollars of more revenue, it might mean twenty thousand dollars of more revenue. Might mean five thousand dollars of more rev, it's just, it's so, it's, it's not going to change probably our, the big picture of the general fund significance. I mean, $5,000 or more rev, it's just, it's so, it's, it's not going to change probably our, the big picture of the general fund significantly.
Yeah, that's true. Okay.
So we can do that if you want us to, I just don't know if it's going to make it, make or break a decision.
Let's see how tonight goes.
Okay.
And also, just to follow, is what you're saying, what Greg will be saying is it's on a program by program basis, because some of them are absolute loss leaders and some are profitable.
Right.
And, you know, two examples that I'm excited want to see open up faster than that is like a splash pad and a water fountain out at Cherry Hill Village. Residents are calling, said, when are you going to turn on? Canton Township owns that water fountain, I don't know if you guys knew that. But they're saying, turn the darn thing on. Well, in both cases, that's pure expense, zero revenue. Right? So every, every decision operational is going to have an impact, positive or negative cash flow.
Okay, thanks.
Any other board questions? I've got to flip through the screens here to see. Summer, I don't, yeah, Summer's hand is up, please, Summer.
Thanks. Pat, my question is, my first question is for you. Have you had any conversations with Stephanie Johnson to hear what the timing is from the state legislature on the state budget? Because I know the fiscal year ends September 30th.
The only new data that I've seen come in is the education piece that I think would happen today. And you may know more about that than I do, and that's specific billion three in funding for bringing kids back to school a little more safely. And then there is a lot of moving parts, but no, nothing specifically that we can identify. I think the bigger issue is going to be what the Heroes Act comes out when it's ever completed. That's going to be a much bigger impact, not only to the state, the county and the township too. And there's, I don't see quick resolution there either. And then the Canton cares, we've got the CBDG funding that's already directly flowed to us and already been distributed through Metro, Wayne Metro. So that's the housing supports. So again, a lot of moving parts and a lot of final decisions have not been made or communicated to us.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about the timing on when we'll get some real concrete numbers on that revenue sharing number. My other question was for Diane, and I know this is a different fund, but are people paying their water bills on time? Are we seeing people struggle with that?
You know, I, some people are delaying their payments, but I usually get phone calls from residents when they're really having a hard time, and I haven't been receiving those yet. You know, we're not doing water shut offs right now, but for the most part, I'm not getting the calls like I did last summer with people not being able to pay. That doesn't mean I'm not going to start to get those calls.
And are we currently having folks from other departments supporting the clerks and the treasurer's office? I know, Michael, you have, you have the election coming up. And Diane, I know that you're in tax collection season.
I, right now, you know, my staff's back three days a week. We're, we're just getting the taxes sent to the printer. And so I'm going to see how the first week in July goes, because I may have to bring my staff back full time. Because we start to get a lot of phone calls. It's not just so much people bringing their dollars in to the office, but also a lot of questions about their taxes. So I'm just going week by week with our department right now. You know, things are piling up. I don't want them to pile up very much more than they are. But we're, things are ramping up and water billing, we've been busy the whole time, so.
Yeah, from my side, I've got Sharonda, who's down helping Michael. And I'm routing all the supervisor's office calls to my cellphone. And both Amy and I are splitting the administrative duties that Sharonda would normally be doing. So that's why, yeah. Amy's putting in more hours than she's booking, I'll just say that.
Yeah, in the clerk's office, we have one employee who's been reassigned from the supervisor's office, one from public safety. And then the remaining four are from leisure services, various departments inside of leisure services. Because currently, you know, managers and managers and directors have, have sent me what they could. We initially had intended on trying to do a staffing model that resulted in the clerk's office employees still being able to participate in the work share and take advantage of the furlough capabilities. That was kind of unsustainable. It was, it was pretty clear last week when we started seeing that we have more requests for absentee ballots than we sent out in the 2016 presidential election. And so, you know, that, I apologize, my dogs are wrestling in the next, in the room next door to me. But so that's part of the reason why we made the decision to go to full time. We are trying it this week, because my intention is to mail out those ballots on Friday. And we will go back to part time next week. And then after 4th of July, we will enter into we entered to July with the remainder of the primary with my three full time staff, people going full time, trying to fill that, that fourth position that we had actually filled prior to to COVID. The lady who was hired was going to start the Monday we shut down. And so we notified her not to come in. Additionally, and then so, so my goal is to get continued part time employee, fill that position, hopefully internally inside the organization so that my staff can go full time and then keep as many as I can, the employees who have been assigned to the clerk's office from other departments that are non operational right now, or people that don't have a function right now. It's been helped, because it's been very helpful. And and the demands on, on, on the clerking office would be extraordinary, even under normal circumstances, if we had this degree of participation. But you add in, A, the the challenges to staffing that we have internally for health reasons and for budgetary reasons. And then you also add in the complications to trying to plan how to have between 7,000 and 8,000 people vote safely in facilities in one month at a time when, you know, a substantial amount of people have yet to be exposed to COVID-19. Very concerned about how to do that. So it takes a lot of planning and have not had the time to really plan for the safe implementation of, of the August election. We've got a good kind of blueprint, it's just about executing it now and then finding the capacity and the time to execute it.
Thank you.
Looking for raised hands with any other trustees, Diane, Michael. Diane, no, you're good. Steve, Summer, I think we've got everybody now. Okay, Greg, are you ready?
Yes, sir, I am. We're getting the screen set up here, just a second. All right, you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. I do have with me tonight, in case we have any specific questions, John Lefever, Deputy Director, Abe Danitzky, our parks and sports supervisor, and Anne Marie Carvalho, our sports coordinator. So that hopefully they can help me out with any specifics that may come up if I don't have the answers. I did want to share it based on a few comments, the, it's not in the presentation tonight, but it came up in the one of the phone calls and just a bit ago as well. We did do a survey of our summit members on the last week to ask, we sent it out to all 10,000 members to ask, you know, what are they thinking? We've got over 1,100, close to 1,200 responses on that, which is a pretty good response rate. We had about 57% were very interested in returning right now, and another 23% were somewhat interested right now. So close to 80% between the two were either very or somewhat interested in returning to the summit as of today. So with that, I wasn't in there, but I thought it'd just be a good piece of information for all to have, and we'll move forward. Wanted to talk about, just remind the board, I know you all know this, but big part of leisure services and not just the, the cost and everything that leisure services has. It is a, it's a service to the community, nothing that we do is going to be making profit. We're there to serve the community. And a couple of the big ones, I won't touch on all these, is just promoting health and wellness, both mental and physical. Right now, we have a lot of individuals with isolation issues and that mental interaction with others is huge right now. And the increasing cultural unity and inclusion, if you go to the summit and a typical night when, when it is open, we have every member of the community is there, every demographic is there. And I think we need that more than ever right now, based on the current happenings around the, the country to be able to bring the community together, obviously, when it's safe to do so with, with the virus. And increasing property value and then providing opportunities for youth and at risk kids, getting them engaged, especially with not a whole lot going on, not a whole lot of other recreational opportunities right now. Couple of key things to keep in mind, when we did our survey in 2019, we're, we had a very high participation rate amongst the community with 81% of people using our parks and 55% of our respondents participating in our programs and activities. So it's a very high participation rate. If you recall, our satisfaction scores were well above state, regional and national benchmarking. As far as budgeting goes, just a couple of points before I get into the operations of what the Sports Center would look like. Overall, the cost, the average cost per household, if you take our entire budget for the 2021 year is $182 per house in Canton, which I think is a pretty economical dollar amount when you look at everything that we're able to offer the community. And overall, we have a cost recovery level of 52%. The national benchmark from a survey that NRPA just did is 26%. And when we worked with Prose Consulting on our strategic plan, they had benchmarked all gold medal agencies. And the benchmark there was 35%. So we certainly exceed that. So we try and be as fiscally responsible with the resources that the board provides us with, for what we have to serve the community. This, I know you won't be able to read, I just wanted to, I know you received this from Will Hayes. We've worked with him closely on developing a five stage plan. This is just a snapshot of the the plan for the Sports Center. So tonight, we're really going to be focusing on what phase three is. So again, I know you can't read this, but I just wanted to show you that this is the guide that we're working off of. And then these next few slides, we have some details as to what that really means operationally and how that looks. Move to the next slide. So in, in the details, this is again, all focusing on phase three for the Sports Center. Each building, each facility, each program would have its own detailed plan here that we can provide or discuss at a future date. So when we're looking at these protocol or these restrictions, we really, the, the resources that we use were the governor's executive orders, the CDC, United States Special League Sports Association, as well as the Michigan High School Athletic Association. They all have guidelines out there, so we're using kind of the best protocols for each of those. And then when you get into the individual sports like baseball, soccer, et cetera, each of those sports have their own governing bodies that are putting together regulations as well that would be required to be followed by those individual sports like soccer. For example, right now, the soccer, Michigan Soccer Association, Michigan Youth Soccer Association, I believe is what it is. Is saying that you can practice, but no contact right now. So that's, that's one of the restrictions for any team that across the state that's practicing right now. Overall, for everything that we're doing, we're looking to require six foot distancing for all of our participants and staff members. We're going to have signs and staff out monitoring social distancing requirements. There are rule changes specific to baseball and softball, where we're, where we would move the umpire behind, six feet behind the pitcher instead of stationed right behind the catcher. Base runner commitment line, which basically is a line near first base that would be crossed instead of having a forced play there. Runners would not be able to slide and they would get themselves up instead of forcing contact or a tag at second base. So basically, all the bases would, would become a forced play instead of a tag play. And designator, designated player only areas. We're going to be putting sanitizer stations, or we've already actually put sanitizing stations out in each of the different quads. And we'll be providing ball wipe for all of our umpires. We have sneeze barriers at all of our customer service areas. And we're able to limit the capacities in each quad at the Sports Center based on the governor's orders. And we have daily sanitation of dugouts and golf carts for those things. So that's just kind of our overall general, and then next we'll get into some more of the specifics for each. So for each of these categories, this is health screening. We have different protocols for programs that we would facilitate as a staff at the Sports Center or any of our locations that fall under sports. Because when we're talking Sports Center, we're really talking all of our sports programs. So some of those programs are sports related, may not actually happen at the if they change from here. The, they, they don't necessarily happen at the Sports Center, they happen at all of our different parks. So Canton Sports Center programs, then GCYDSA, Greater Canton Youth Baseball Association has their rules, Canton Soccer Club has theirs. And then any other rentals, like we do field permits for lacrosse cricket and several other different sports. So we have requirements for them as well. So for health screenings, for any of our programs, we're going to require a temperature check for all staff at umpires prior to their shift. And then daily symptom checks and signs, screening all participants. And if anybody has a fever or has any of the signs or symptoms or has been exposed, they would not be able to participate or be sent home for the day. Obviously, if it's a staff person that is exposed or has a fever, then we would send them home and then work through HR on a return work process that HR has for any employees that are, have fallen sick. GCYDSA also would be doing daily symptom checks and sending folks home. Canton Soccer Club would be pre screening, pre screening all of their participants and sending them home. And then for any rentals, they would conduct daily symptom checks and following the CDC guidelines. Social distancing and face masks for our programs, we would require adherence to social distancing guidelines, the six foot guidelines. And any failure to comply to that, if we have any teams that are violating that, then they would lose privileges to the fields. If there was a league that was violating that or any teams, we would ask them to leave and potentially suspend them from the league. We're going to have directional signs throughout the facility, just like we do it here at the administration building. We're going to recommend masks for players and coaches when six foot social distancing can't be maintained. That would be when they're outside. If people, anybody that comes inside, they would be required to wear a mask at that point. And we will have a designated staff person out there monitoring and enforcing social distancing guidelines for any of our programs. So if anybody violates that, we would have somebody out there to enforce that. And then also no shared equipment, so bring your own bat, bring your own helmet, those sorts of things. GCYDSA, they're going to have their coaches designated to enforce when players to adhere to six foot social distancing. There's some really easy practices that I've seen out there. By setting up columns, you can have kids stationed at each column that's at least six feet apart to give kids a designated area to go to. Any teams not complying, again, would result in cancellation. Players and coaches wouldn't need to wear masks while they're out on the field or batting, but it's suggested while they're in the dugout. And we're going to actually not be using our traditional dugouts. We'll have people bring their own chairs and kind of set up chairs along the fence and call that their dugout area. And they'll have a designated volunteer that will be spot checking for adherence to the social distancing. GCYDSA practices and games don't all happen at the Sports Center. So we realistically can't have a Canton staff member going to, to all of our different parks, monitoring those sorts of things. So we don't want to promise something that we can't deliver on. So we will have GCY have a designated volunteer. We will have GCY have a designated volunteer do that, and also they will be following the no-share equipment uh, protocol. Next, Soccer Club would have social distancing guidelines in place uh, for any small group training, that's all that they can do right now, based on the uh, Michigan High School. Uh, Athletic Association guidelines, as well as the Michigan uh, Youth Soccer Association is saying that you could, basically they're able to do. Practice for drills with no contact, so that makes it difficult for them to do anything other than some small group training. Any rental that we have for anything that's outside of soccer, um, GCYDSA, so this might be cricket, um, lacrosse, anything else. Prior to receiving a permit, they will have to submit to us a social distancing plan prior to their first program. And we'll be monitoring that plan for compliance with any executive orders that are in place at the time, as well as CDC guidelines. And they'll also be required to have a designated social distancing monitor at their program or event and have, have that person picked ahead of time, so we know who that is. Um, disinfecting practices, we're gonna have, like we mentioned before, sanitizing stations in each quad. Ball wipes are gonna be provided to umpires, the dugouts and golf carts are gonna be sanitized daily at the sports center. Um, cough and sneeze barriers for ins- inside service areas, no shared equipment. GCYDSA is gonna rotate their balls, which will be sanitized by the coaches in between innings and use. No shared equipment for them either. Canton Soccer Club is gonna provide sanitizer stations as well. Um, and sanitize our equipment after every training session and no shared equipment. And the rental group would be per, per their rental plan that they submit to us for approval prior to receiving a field permit. Some additional safety measures that we're looking at is we would have limited public access at the sports center for any indoor um, meetings. Really, we're gonna be doing ninety-five percent of our customer interaction outside. If there is a need to go inside, then we would have, we would screen them prior to coming in and require masks for those limited interactions there. Kickers Bar and Grill would open following the, the governor's executive orders on um. Capacity and social distancing, I believe right now that's at fifty percent capacity with. Enforce social distancing of at least six foot, the nice thing with Kickers Bar and Grill is we have a. A very large outdoor seating area that can be expanded and put more tables out there. Um, since it, it's basically inside the park is, there's considered part of their service area, so that really provides a great opportunity to, to do that out there at Kickers. Um, GCYDSA, they're gonna eliminate any shared drinks or snacks typically at the end of the game, one of the moms is designated to, or parents, I should say. Um, in my family, it's mom that does it because I get lost in the mix there, um. But the, there's usually a parent that's designated to bring uh, snacks and drinks after each game, so that, that would be eliminated. Kids would bring their own snacks and drinks, um, equipment bags left outside the dugout lined up at the fence six feet apart. And eliminate handshakes and do tipping of the hats for sportsmanship. Um, so kind of reevaluating the way we do those things, umpires and coaches are gonna avoid exchanging documents, usually you're exchanging lineups and those sorts of things, so that would be eliminated. Um, we would schedule extra time between um, the games to allow for a reduction in traffic flow. So the, the team that was playing has time to leave, get all their stuff, get out. Prior to the next group coming in, so you don't have that cross interaction of people passing each other and potentially. Risking any uh, social distancing issues there. Um, and the organizer must maintain a complete, a complete list of coaches, players, employees present at the event. They will, obviously, we can't get every spectator on there, but any participants and employees. At an event, so that if somebody were to um, get sick, then we, they would able, be able to notify others. So that there can be some uh, tracking of potential interaction and let people know that somebody else. Um, came down sick and that you may have been exposed to that, so they can then isolate social distance better. Soccer Club, participants again would use their own water bottle, towel and other products, so there's a big emphasis. And the big emphasis on all of these is social distancing and not sharing equipment. And rentals again would be per the plan that they submitted for uh, approval with us. Um, a little information on GCYDSA, they also did a survey of their participants, they sent it out to a thousand participants that they had signed up for the summer program. And they gave them the opportunity to defer until the fall session if they had any concerns about playing this summer. And out of a thousand players, they had only fifty that chose to defer and actually had an, an, an additional thirty folks that signed their kids up for the program. And at that point, they actually stopped taking more enrollments because they didn't want to keep enrolling people in a program that they may or may not be able to have, so they've been least listing people. So there's more, more than twenty people on the waitlist, so after the survey, they potentially could have more people signed up for the program than they did prior to. So people are eager to get out and play baseball and get their kids active in the program. Um, they did begin practices, they're not, uh, some of the teams are playing games in other locations, Plymouth Township, I believe some of them are even happening in Axalani right now. Um, each year, GCYBA, GCYDSA does contribute ten thousand dollars to the park's budget for field maintenance, as well as another five thousand dollars in materials that they give to the township. And they also paid last fall fifty-five thousand dollars towards um, a capital improvement of a new field here in Heritage Park that will be ready to do a grand opening. For um, once we're able to start games, so we can discuss a little bit about that today as well. Um, we do have a fair amount of permits that are pending, people that are requesting to utilize the fields that uh, we would. So these are the types of things I was talking about under the rental programs that would uh, require a plan prior to usage. So Patriots Baseball, Ford Motor Cricket League, Michigan Cricket Association, Detroit Tiger Baseball Camp and then a lacrosse camp. Our lacrosse program as well, and those are revenue opportunities with very minimal expenses are on our end to hold those programs. And as Wendy mentioned in hers, we did put together a um. Snapshot budget for what it would look like, so this is baseline, the weekly expenses in this are not our total expenses. These are weekly expenses above and beyond what we're spending today. So if we were to reopen um, for phase three, so the, this is a phase three budget right here, phase four would get into tournaments. So this does not include any tournaments or anything like that, there's a note below about potential tournaments. Um, but our weekly revenue is conservatively uh, estimated a little over fifty-three hundred dollars and incremental expenses at seven hundred and forty dollars. So a weekly net of about forty-six hundred dollars. Um, that would help to offset the subsidy, this doesn't mean that the sports center is all of a sudden profitable. As I mentioned, this is um, those expenses are above and beyond the expenses that we have today. So um. That's basically what that would look like. Um. So our opportunities here, we do have safety guidelines and protocols in place, we're ready to go with that, we can serve the community families, there's a lot of demand out there. We can help address some of the mental and physical health issues that are out there right now, uh, get people active. And the governor did res- uh, lift the restriction on outdoor sports and recreation activities on June eighth of this year. And. Lastly, other opportunities that we do have, um, that we feel we could do safely within leisure services outside would be some outdoor fitness classes. Right now, we have all of our um, instructors, our car time employees, so they're not working right now. Um, splash playgrounds, drive-in movies, community gardens, some small concerts and small, other small outdoor events and rentals could be done. Following the uh, social distancing protocols, the CDC guidelines and the governor's executive orders. And with that, we'll open it up for discussion.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Thanks Greg and team, that was some good detail um, that I had sent in requests for, so I, I appreciate you guys putting that together. Um, there were some other questions that I had, so I will um, go through them a little bit here. Um. And Pat, you didn't, did you wanna take citizens' comments first, or did you want to do?
Uh, we could, um, listen to public comment first.
Yeah.
And then, that's completed, then we'll come back with trusty uh, comments and questions.
Okay.
Good idea, so now if there's anybody on the line who would like to speak at this time, uh, to make public comment on uh, facilities and, and timing. And now would be the time to do that, I, Michael, we had one. Um, another person that had asked to be read into the record kind of a thing? Additional?
That is correct, I can read that now, um.
And then we'll get the other folks on line.
One thing. Yeah.
Are you gonna just paraphrase what was sent in, I think?
Uh, sure, um. You know, and I, I, I don't know what being read, I wanna be clear, like, we don't put um. Public comments into the minutes, which is technically the public record, but it will be a part of the audio and the video that people can, 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 can hear or read. And then um, and tr- traditionally. It's not appropriate, or it hasn't been appropriate for like a, kind of a back and forth during public comments, but um, the. Issue is, one, it appears that the Canton Township Board of Trustees is taking restrictions further than what is recommended by the governor, the state and the CDC. Please explain why? With Canton closing its facilities, are they creating a new risk with Canton residents going elsewhere for leisure and needed services and possibly bringing back the virus back to Canton? Please consider the following two requests as options specific to honoring the contract we have with Canton to perform. Formal requests, one. Please allow us to access the stage of the Village Theater to perform without an audience for the purpose of recording on a safe surface. With proper lighting and audio, this will produce a quality video show that can be shared with families and possibly at an outdoor event. We will adhere to capacity restrictions and safety precautions while recording. We could even work with Canton Cable to produce, it is my understanding that theater was going to be allowed, allowing a church to return. Two. Grant the ability to work with leisure services uh, to create an outdoor performance area with stage flooring, minimal lighting. And audio that can accommodate performances in the pavilion. We would compensate Canton Township for the cost involved, we have advanced. Dancers and point work along with other forms of dance like tap that cannot be performed on grass or cement. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation. Sincerely, Debbie Ash, Canton resident and local business owner of Dance Beat, B E A T. So. That is the public comment.
Thank you, Mike, now if anybody else is raising their hand.
We have two currently, I want me to go with uh, um, so Sheil was, David was first this time, but Sheil was, had, had raised their hand. Earlier, so I would defer, I would technically say that is earlier, I will allow. To, to, to talk, um, let me try. Go ahead and unmute yourself and you are free to go.
Okay, can you hear me? Everyone? Okay. Good evening, everybody, uh, so I'm Sushil Bad, I'm the chairman of Michigan Cricket Association, the reason I raise my hand is. I was looking at, you know, um, the ways to utilize the um, the Heritage Park Cricket Field for our organization. Um, and what is the plans around that and how would we, you know, our, our membership really is eager to go out and play some cricket out there. So what is the directives from our um, fellow, um, you know, Canton uh, representatives and. Is there any way we can use it for practices purposes and, and other forms of, you know, recreation?
Yeah, I, I, I think I can answer that just.
Going to disable, go ahead.
Well, just the, the, the parks are open and available, but the, I believe the, the Michigan Cricket, that's a private group that rents the space. So we're not really in a position where we're saying we're gonna open the space for games, but certainly your, your people could come out to practice anytime. But that's clarification that we need to get from the Board of Trustees, and that may not happen tonight, but in the very near future. So we don't have a solid response for you at this moment, but certainly part of the conversation, what we're thinking about today.
All right, David, I have allowed you to talk if you want to unmute yourself and make public comments, go ahead.
Hi, uh, what about restrooms? The box, it's what?
I think. The question was what about the restrooms at the parks?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we've opened some, but not all, Greg, can you help me unmute and tell me which facilities we have indeed open and what are not at this point, if any?
All of our parks restrooms are open at this, this time, we opened uh, Indy Park last weekend, that was the last ones that we had not opened at that point. They do have, uh, just for the board's knowledge, I think we've sent it out there, um, we have. Posted signs on all of our public restrooms that says that, that states that these facilities are sanitized once per day, use at your own risk.
All right, I have Trevor ready, if you want to unmute your, well, you've unmuted yourself, go ahead and make public comment.
Uh, yeah, I think I'm unmuted now, um, yeah, so I know there's talk about the splash pad and about some of the amenities and things kind of being opened up. Um, I just wanted to kind of express some, yeah, some concern about that, uh, you know, I would think, you know, I think everybody would rather, you know, people be safe, uh, rather safe than sorry. Uh, and that like opening things up maybe a little too soon, especially when we can wait maybe a little longer, uh, might be, might be the best course of action. I know especially for, for, for parents, uh, the summer is usually a time for people getting outside and kind of like, you know, summer jobs on. And that like these circumstances that we all currently live in kind of exacerbate that and make that really weird. Um, but I think uh, I, I, it, it, it feels to me like maybe waiting a little longer to get a little, little more clarity in the situation might be the best.
Thank you.
I see nobody else's hand raised.
Okay. It's, there's no other public comment or statements to be made at this time. Uh, trustees, comments or questions for uh, Greg and his team?
Go ahead, Diane.
I'm sorry, who's, who's going first?
Sorry about that.
Diane, okay, there you go.
Yeah, um, thanks for the presentation, very helpful. I know, you know, we're slowly opening the township for business and I appreciate, you know, we have the sneeze guards. Um, the signs, the sticker, the duct tape on the floor for distance, you know, and, and so we're slowly preparing for residents to come in. And we've been, today we had more residents than last week, which is good. Um, when you're showing for the, the different games, you have uh, sanit, let's say you have sanitation centers. Um, and then the cost of cleaning and the signs and all that, what, how, it sounds like you already purchased all those and how much did you spend? For the sanitization centers and, and all of that, and what do you, how much do you think it's gonna cost per week? Just to clean all of the equipment and everything?
Those costs are actually fairly minimal, we have most of that equipment in, alls we had to do was buy some of the supplies, so like the sanitation centers are hand, you know, the touch-free hand sanitizer, Purell stations, those, the actual station is about. Twenty dollars a piece, so it's just the refills and the supplies for that, so it's very minimal. Um, as far as the actual labor to do it, we have staff that is, that are doing cleaning projects, we would just refocus to doing, just like we have in this building. We're refocusing staff more towards the touch points instead of some of, um, especially since the facility itself isn't getting as much usage, we wouldn't need to be vacuuming and those sorts of things. So it's more reallocation of their time than it is an actual cost to do those sorts of things.
And then will they be going and cleaning, like sanitizing all the areas in between games and, and that too? And then will they be going and cleaning, like sanitizing all the areas in between games and, and that too?
No, we're going to be scheduling teams, so there's not overlap. So if you have a double header, for example, you would, instead of rotating from one field to the other, you would have a double header on the same field, same dugout. And then at the sports center, we would be doing that once per day, so prior to the, the next day going there.
And then at Township Hall, if a resident comes in and doesn't have a mask, we're providing masks. And you said everybody will be required to wear masks. Will, will you be providing masks for the players or?
Absolutely. We'll have masks available.
So you'll have masks, okay.
Yeah, so we've worked with all the different facilities to, to purchase enough masks. There's, we have plenty of masks on hand at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Stephen?
Thanks. So again, thanks Greg and team. First of all, I just wanted to say that I, I know the community realizes that no one here created this pandemic. We're just trying to deal with it as best we can in a safe way for everybody. And we do listen to everything that you say about your favorite activities. We have our favorite activities as well that we are missing and want to get back to. But we want everyone to stay safe at the same time. And it does concern me when I look around the country and I see places that opened up before us now having to deal with second waves, filled ICU rooms, and I don't want to go back there. I don't know, maybe, maybe we'll never get back to what, what it was, which would be great, or maybe we're destined to get back there. I have no idea. So I just want to make sure this is all done, and I know we all do, in a way that can be as safe as possible. So, and, and Greg and team, I, I like a lot of the operational things that you have put in place to ensure safety and, and the protocols that will be put in place. The, the aspects that I looked at and, and thought about were operational, monitoring, financial, legal, procedural, overall health, reporting, things like that. So I had a few questions that I don't think I got answered fully by your presentation, Greg. So I just wanted to, first of all, understand the different venues that we're talking about are. You didn't, I don't think you actually showed specific dates. I mean, you talked about them and you ha, I, I, in your charts or Bill Hayes' charts and the color-coded charts, there's certain phases. And, and I think I saw in an email that different venues can be at different phases. Is that right?
That's correct.
So when we talk about CSC or the summit, what are the actual dates for those or the Village Theater or?
So the tentative dates that, that have been set at this point would be the sports center, which would include all of your sports fields, you know, Freedom, Floodin, Heritage, et cetera, is August 1st. The summit, I believe, the summit as well as recreation programs was set for October 1st. The theater, January 1st. Therapeutic Recreation Programs, January 1st. And the block following the school schedule. Recreation Programs is also October 1st. Well, those were the dates that were set at a meeting a while ago, and we've learned a fair amount since then, so. I guess that's part of the discussion. I don't know if we want, Pat, if you wanted to have those discussions tonight or at future point, but you know, the sports organizations obviously are pushing for earlier than August 1st.
And the recreation stuff, does that include summer camps?
Yes. All summer camps canceled.
All summer camps are canceled at this point. Are you asking this board at all to change those dates or recommending changes or at all, or are you, is the quest? I, I'm, yeah, Pat, I'm just trying to understand the question.
This is the first time that we've had the full board together. Really, since we had the initial, you know, leadership team with the full-time electeds and we kind of, based on all the information we had with the government, Governor Whitner, Whitner's executive orders were saying, we, we arrived at these dates based on what we understood at that time. So the purpose of tonight is to get a better understanding and appreciate the level of thought that's gone into the phase openings and how we can protect the public and our employees. Now, I guess what I'm looking for is, is some kind of indicator or directional. We're kind of okay with the dates, or no, we've got huge heartburn with the dates, and you know, this is what we think we, we should be doing or changing. And then with that mixed underneath there is, is simple little things like if we turn on the fountain at Cherry Hill Village, which is an aesthetic beauty thing, that's staff time, and that's another part-time person that would have to come in and do that. So those are operational decisions that I, I'm not looking for the board to micromanage each of these. It's just give us a sense to if, where we're going to, we've got basic timelines in place that could be subject to change, right? If the governor's executive orders see a second wave and she shuts everything down, and we're right back square one again, right? So everything's evolving. And what tonight is, is to allow you guys to see the amount of work that staff's putting behind the scenes to prepare for the opening that is eventual, that may be these dates if nobody has heartburn with. And then the little one-offs like the theater group, putting something on at a pavilion, a wood stage, willing to pay those costs. That's again, a little one-off operational. If the, the parks are open, the leisure services should have the ability to go set that stage up for and get compensated for without violating the executive orders or anything the trustees are asking us to do.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
And I would, and I would add specifically for the sports center and the sports activities, everything that we presented tonight is in plans for August 1st, but we are also as a staff, and we have all the equipment that we are ready and prepared to open earlier, should that decision be made. Because the sooner we can open, the, the sooner we're able to potentially save the summer season. If we don't open until August 1st, GCYDSA will not have a summer program for their kids.
And the date that August 1st was geared to get staffing back in time for fall leagues.
Correct.
How that date was arrived at, August 1st?
I see Diane had a comment on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a real quick comment regarding this and everybody, you know, we want to make sure our staff is safe, the residents are safe, and we can afford this. Right now, my staff is only working three days a week. I know a lot of DPW guys are working two to three days a week. I want to make sure that we're getting, you know, the people's work done. I've got residents who need water meters checked and that, and our guys don't have the time to do it because they're not working five days a week. And so leisure service is very important. I agree. But I think some of the services that our residents need, we need to step that up if we're going to be opening up all of that. I, I just have a huge list. And we're slowly calling residents to make appointments for that, but we don't have enough staff to do all of the work that needs to be done.
Okay, so what I, what I'd like to see to do there, because what we saw based on the financial projections with the work share is we're in pretty good shape with the current plan. And like Michael, he's got special needs with his election. I think, Diane, if you have requirements to, to have additional staffing to support your meterage or whatever, reach out to Kareem, work through those, and we'll get you what you need to continue to level of service, right? So that's available. And financially, Wendy just demonstrated, we can afford some of that. Absolutely. In her numbers.
So.
We're, we're able to implement this plan with limited part-time staff that we would need to bring back, but we would also not be, we would not need to bring people out of the work share program to accommodate this, the five-day-a-week program at the sports center either.
So, so with that understood, thank you. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the level of protocols that you put in place. I'm uncomfortable with ensuring that they actually occur. So things I'd be looking at, like the monitoring for the township-sponsored programs like the softball or baseball with specific monitors there, that's good. I'm uncomfortable with the self-monitoring. It's putting upon a resident and not someone, you know, who's paid to do that type of work. So in terms of the, the non-township programs that do rentals, I, I would at least like to see some spot checking of protocols going on. And reporting back to the board, how are we doing? Like, I mean, I, I know no one's going to be perfect in this. You know, you see it everywhere. I was pleasantly surprised to see every single person I ran, walked by at Lowe's the other day wearing a mask. But other places I see no mask, that type of thing. So one question I, I had was, what is our, what do we have legally that could be brought against us potentially if it's a program like the summit or CSC and all of a sudden COVID occurs on something that we've sponsored? So I don't know, Kristin, if you have any thoughts on that in terms of our liabilities in, in this? If people start getting COVID in we've, in a program we've put forward?
Well, you know, it's, because this pandemic is such a new thing, there's not really a lot of case law on it or statutes to deal with it, but I mean, the one thing that's certain is the township always has the protection of governmental immunity. So as long as our employees are following protocols, you know, within the guidelines of the governor's executive orders, which are continuing to be upheld by the courts, then I think the, the liability to Canton is nominal, if any. And with respect to the programs that are run by outside groups, I mean, just the fact that they're on township property doesn't create liability. I mean, we have agreements with them and they provide insurance and indemnify the township. So if it's a non-township-sponsored or non-township-run group, the, the liability or the risk is delegated to the groups that are running those programs.
Okay. Yeah, I hadn't seen anything on that, so. Thank you. And then I just had, I think, two more questions. So in terms of monitoring, I would like to see something a little more robust, even for the rentals, even if it's just random spot checking or something like that. And I would like to see reporting back to the, to the board of how things are going. One thing I would, I, I didn't hear, but maybe you're going to do, is will there be a phone number for people to call if they see people not following protocols drastically to report that, besides the supervisor?
Steve, I get everyone. Maybe you should report neighbors to my office daily.
But, but the, an official thing, like if you're uncomfortable or if something's going on, and not that we would, not that we would not believe them or take their word, but we would investigate ourselves.
Public Safety actually has made those runs. They have.
Okay. So I would like to see officially, you know, people being able to know how to report something like that. And then lastly, shutting back down if necessary. So what parameters are we going to look at where we say, you know what, things are getting bad again? Are, and are we going to put that in those contracts or agreements or whatever, that we have the right to shut it down at any time based on Will's numbers or the state numbers or some, some numbers like that?
Yeah, I, I think we've had a lot of conversation internally, not with the full board like we're sitting here today, so this is good. The subject matter experts are the CDC. The governor has subject matter experts. Each of these major sports organizations in the school district included, the state of Michigan, have subject, subject matter experts. And I think what we need to do is follow their lead, and that will give us very clear direction on shutting things down or not shutting things down.
Okay. If I may jump in real quick.
Yes, please, Michael.
Because if you look at the CDC guidelines, one of the most important caveats that every single one of them have, like if you look at them for faith communities, for schools, for elections, for sports, for businesses, is the first thing they say is that this is, this is not to, this is to supplant, or this is to supplement, and not to override any state or local regulations, right? They say this is obviously done on a regional basis. This is not meant to supersede or override anything done on the local level. And I've heard some people discussing things like you're going further than the CDC. What's interesting is, is if you read through the guidelines in a very slow and methodical manner, the opening paragraph to every single guideline says, if you have decided you want to open up, at which point they never actually say, or give a, a, a blessing, if you will, to opening up. What they're essentially doing is, is providing methods, once you've decided you want to open up, how to try to do so in a way that minimizes the risk of exposure for as many people as possible. If you read through those guidelines, it's very important. It's very instructive. It's extremely instructive. So I do want to make sure when we talk about the CDC guidelines, that those are not like, we recommend it's okay. It's okay for everybody to do X, Y, and Z. It's, if you've decided you want to do X, Y, and Z, here's how to do it and minimize as much exposure as possible. So I think that's kind of important, and I think it's also important that we talk about the state, the governor's executive orders. Because I don't know about you guys, we talk about Canton being leaders, right? What's important to note is, is Canton closed before an executive order, right? We didn't wait for the governor to tell us to close. We made the decision to close outside an executive order telling us to, right? I was actually very disappointed in the governor in the sense that we had an election on March 10th, and that night, that night, she declared a state of emergency after the, the polls had closed. I think she knew she was going to declare a state of emergency. It was probably seen as too difficult to do so before the election, because there was no plan for how to conduct an election under a state of emergency. She declared a state of emergency right after polls closed, right after 15,000 Canton residents shared the same pens, right after 1 million residents in Michigan went to the same locations, touched the same stuff, and passed COVID. And we talked about, there's actually numerous people have discussed, why did COVID move so fastly in Detroit area? Why did COVID move so quickly throughout Michigan? I think we are the only community, we're the only state that I know of that held an election the day they declared a state of emergency. That was not very wise, but to be fair, she was not the only elected official at that moment who was potentially playing politics around COVID, right? The President of the United States of America was making less than truthful statements about COVID at the time as well. So shame on both of them. More importantly, we made the determination that Friday we were going to close without any type of executive order telling us to close. We closed down township facilities, the board voted that Tuesday, and finally that Friday, I think three to four days after we voted, they decided to implement the shelter in place. And I remember getting laughed at by other clerks because we were closing. They thought we were being overreactive. And I'm glad we closed when we did. I really am. You know, Beijing had 55 days without a COVID case, 55 days without a COVID case. That's amazing, because Beijing is huge, right? That's the area where it started. But guess what happened? A strand from Europe has found its way back to Beijing. So COVID ran through Beijing. They have 55 days without a case, and it's back 55 days later, and it came from Europe. That's fascinating, and what that tells me is that we have reason to be concerned, because Michigan is being moved into the green, right? Yay, we've done, you know, as many people complained about. Yay, we've done, you know, as many people complained about the executive orders that were put into place, the shelters in place, is the restrictions on landscaping. I've heard these complaints over the last 60 days or 90 days, 100 days. Um, unwise, those complaints, because in general, Michigan has handled this better than any other state. But if you think we're immune, I would say, think again. Beijing probably thought that they were immune 55 days without a COVID case. We had, we had five over last night, right? I saw the supervisor send that email out when this meeting started. We had five new cases last night. We had three the night before. We have not gone 55 days without a COVID case. We are not immune from a potential. Now, if I look at this news article from yesterday, college sports programs providing a glimpse at COVID-19 challenges ahead. Last week Clemson announced 28 athletes and athletics staffers had tested positive for COVID-19. On Saturday, Kansas State said it was shutting down its voluntary workouts for athletes at state, at team facilities after a spike of 14 positive cases. And on Monday, Notre Dame reported one positive among 91 tested football players. Wisconsin had two. 13 University of Texas football players test positive for coronavirus. That's last week. At least 30 LSU football players quarantined due to COVID-19 outbreak. Um, so you've got LSU, you've got University of Texas, you've got Clemson, you've got all these students playing sports, um, that are not, that are not, you know, um, they're shutting down. So, um, you know, I'll be abundantly clear in my role as a, as a, as a board member, this board of trustees. Um, I did not use the governor as a political shield to protect us when it came down to closing. We closed ahead of her and I'm glad we did. We have less cases in Canton than other communities. I understand people are having a very difficult time with quarantine. Immunologists say that between 50 and 80% of the population will contract COVID before there's a vaccine. That's a big range, but that's also well above the 60,000 confirmed cases Michigan has had. We've had 6,500 deaths, which tells me if it's the 3% um, mortality rate, then that means there's between 150 and 200,000 actual cases of COVID in a state of 8 million people. Uh, 50% of 8 million is a lot of people, right? We went to shelter in place because you didn't want to see a spike in confirmed cases. There is nothing that indicates we won't see a spike again that will protect Michigan as well. Um, I believe these decisions were made, um, deliberately. I believe they were made, um, I believe the board trustees should have been brought in. I am concerned that we have not implemented programming over the last 90 to 100 days that would allow for social distancing for individuals to combat things like mental illness, to combat things like having a difficult time with depression from being shut in. It is a real thing, being isolated, social isolation, depression. Uh, these, these are not justifications for opening up things in a necessarily unsafe manner, right? Um, these are justifications for us providing a service to people, right? Being relevant to the people's lives here in Canton, because they are paying taxes. They are paying taxes and they deserve a services. So I'm just kind of curious, where is the programming that would comply with the executive orders, right? Is it legal? Does follow CDC guidelines? Is it done in a safe manner? Um, where is that, uh, programming? And then is it financially to some degree neutral? Or, you know, it's okay, I think I'm comfortable subsidizing, um, recreation parks, these are services. I have no problem with, with that, um, to a degree. But I wish we were more interested in how do we provide programming for 100% of the people? The 35 to 40 to 50% of people that want to come back right now. But also the people that don't want to come back. How do we provide programming for those people? Are we thinking about that broad array or are we solely focused on bringing back what we've had in the past? That's my two cents. I would just like, you know, and, and to be honest, I am disappointed in what I feel like is a lack of unity around a decision that was made. It doesn't feel like, um, the plan was, um, brought to the trustees in a very solid manner. It doesn't feel like administratively it has the support, um, from everybody who was involved in that decision. Um, and that, that part is very frustrating, uh, to see. Um, and it's also frustrating for me to see people from the community saying that the board of trustees has made this decision when we all know that the board trustees was never even involved in it.
That's been clarified. Thank you, Michael. That's been clarified.
I'm sorry?
That has been clarified. That point, it was the leadership team, which is the directors, as well as the three full-time electeds have gotten us to this point. Now we're asking the rest of the trustees to chime in.
Okay, then I'll take this time to say, I feel like every time we say Canton Township has decided this, Canton Township has decided that. And unfortunately in this, a very challenging and controversial issue, it was expressly chosen not to use Canton Township, but to use the board of trustees. That is something I find suspicious. And to be honest, I took it personally offensive. A, B, it also insinuated to people who are suspiciously watching us because they expect government officials to do things enclosed, behind closed doors or in the dark, especially when you're agitated because you feel like somebody is, you know, harming something you care about, you're overly suspicious. And it's frustrating for me when we say things like this determination has been made when there was no one meeting about it. So, yeah, about accountability, holding the right people accountable for the decision, that matters. Uh, two, insinuating that something was done behind closed doors, that matters. Um, and then three, um, you know, I, I love surveys of people as well. I love surveys of, of users. They are suspiciously unreliable because they're not typically done by people who understand data. They understand that people will over, go ahead, poll 10 people, ask them how often they exercise. See what your answers are. I guarantee you, they don't correlate to how often those people actually exercise. Statisticians will tell you, if you, you know, there's a great one, a great study, um, of, I believe Rutgers University, where they asked people their SAT scores and people lied on the survey of their own SAT scores, because it's what we sometimes tend to do. But even that, I was unaware that that, that, that survey was going to be put out. I was like, I wonder if that'll make its way into this presentation and be used as a justification for why we should be opening up. I don't like that it feels like we as an organization might be combat, it might be doing combat with each other. And that, that frustrates me a great deal. Um, when a decision is made, it should be made with, with buy-in from everybody, including the board of trustees. Um, and, and then to that end, people should stand by it. People should not be giving lip service to people when they call and they're frustrated about something and saying, oh, that was X, that was so-and-so, they made me do this, or that was so-and-so. They're the ones who made this decision, especially when we know they were not the ones who made this decision. So I will tell you, this is me angry, you're seeing it. I'm very angry. I'm very frustrated with this entire process. I'm very concerned about the residents of Canton Township and where their tax dollars have been going, because where is the programming that they are entitled to? That, that can be done safely outdoors and then, you know, that accommodates what they want, their desires. Um, and with that, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Is there any other board of trustees comments at this time? Yeah, Greg, let's, let's hold for now. Go ahead, Anne Marie.
And you, okay, thank you. Thank you for this, uh, presentation that you did. And also in building upon what, uh, Michael and Diane and Stephen said, a couple of things, I'm sorry, I wrote down, looking down at people. So basically, um, Mr. Hayes, could you please tell us, I know that a chart was sent out today and as was stated, what are we seeing in Canton? It seems like we're seeing starting to creep up again, just in Canton.
I think I've unmuted. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Okay. So just let me give you, if I may, uh, just a quick snapshot. Daily, worldwide, the numbers of COVID cases continue to increase. Um, however, that being said, the deaths are declining. So we're learning more, we, not me, I'm not a scientist. Um, but we're learning more about how to treat COVID patients, so less people are dying. Uh, so there is some, some progress there. In the U.S., uh, currently the mortality rate is about 11% based on, that is based on, uh, cases and outcomes. So what that means is cases where someone has a confirmed COVID case, they've been either clear for, uh, 30 days, that, that they've been, uh, absolved of symptoms for 30 days, or unfortunately they have passed. So based on limited outcomes. So that, that number seems to be decreasing. More specifically in Michigan, the numbers have, have come down very well. One death is too many, I would agree. However, I mean, at some point, there, there has to be some determination that none of us are going to get out of here alive. Uh, that being said, the numbers in Canton have been very low. Uh, two, three, some days, couple of days in a row without a new case or a new death or whatever. Um, so the numbers have flattened. Are we at zero? Will we remain at zero? I, I don't think that, that's reasonable to assume that we will. Um, there has been a substantial uptick in, uh, several states. Florida, Arizona, California, Texas, and Louisiana have seen exponential growth. Um, if you look back two weeks prior to that, that was around the time that, that the George Floyd, uh, issue occurred. There was protests throughout the country in many areas and all of a sudden we saw a spike. Uh, you know, I, I can only draw my own personal opinions to, to what caused that, that spike. Statewide, the numbers at our hospitals are down, um, uh, to a manageable level. And, and where our governor said, and I agree with Michael, that the, the lockdown or the, the shelter in place was the right thing to do at the right time. And, and then now what we have heard is that when we get that flattening, when we reach that level where, where, where it's a, a number that's manageable and/or our hospitals are, have stabilized, that's when she's talking about reopening. So if we're talking about we're following CDC guidelines and, and state requirements or there's the state executive orders, I think that's kind of where, where we're at now. That being said, I think all these plans that we put in place have an ability to dial back, as the governor has said. If a program or something we see is not working right into, to Mr. Snyderman's, uh, uh, comments, if we see a group or a program that, that's not operating safely or consistently, uh, they can be removed from, from access, they can lose their privileges. So, I mean, that, that's just where we're at now. One other thing I just wanted to mention is, uh, just on, on a spike, a second wave, if you will, just so everyone understands what, what we're seeing now in Texas, Florida, in those places is not a second wave. In order to hit a second wave, you have to hit your peak. You have to plateau. You have to see the decline in the flattening of the curve. And that flattening has to occur for four to eight weeks before you see another increase and that would be a second wave. The only areas that are really potentially set up for a second wave would be Michigan and, and New York based on the extent of our, our flattening of the curve.
Thank you. I wouldn't suggest, like you said, that those are second waves, but those states that you mentioned are states that opened earlier. So you're right, I wouldn't call it a second wave. I call it opening earlier and that's where you're seeing the spikes. Um, that, that a lot of reports that I read today did state that. And we do have to keep the residents safe and we also, our job is to balance how not only our recreational facilities, but our clerk's office, our treasurer's office, and even like our sidewalk programs. I get a lot of, um, emails on that saying, you know, is somebody going to come out? I can't get, you know, an answer for two weeks to get called back and that's because our employees aren't there. We have to balance out our recreational needs and the needs of the people's work as Diane spoke to it. Um, another thing is, is the recreational openings outdoors for mental, like Michael said, mental illness is really important. Get those people outside exercising together. We can do that now, just even bringing part-time people back, bring the stages in, you know, we can get things done outside. So I'm still concerned about what the cities that in states were seeing that opened early and what's happening there, not wanting it to happen here and making sure that we keep our services for all of the residents constant before we look at adding extra things. Um, also, one thing that, I do have one question about your presentation, Greg. You talked a lot about the players and how far they would be, but I didn't see anything on, are you, does this mean you're keeping out people from sitting in the stands and watching? Is it, because I didn't see anything about that. Obviously you can ask people to six, sit six feet apart in the bleachers, but I'm assuming that you're including that nobody can come in and watch. Is that correct?
We would actually be closing the bleachers and then we're able to control the number of people at the entrance to each quad. So if you, if parents want to come in and watch their kids play a game, that sort of thing, they would bring their own chairs and that space those are along the fences.
Okay, thank you. And then the capacities that you're talking about, even, um, the numbers. From what I understand, a, a judge took us, took the governor to court to open up some of these facilities, but we still wouldn't be able to open the facilities at 100%. It's still, wasn't it 25%?
I don't know what it is for gyms. That's not, I, I, I don't even think that's something we would consider at this time until, because that's in the courts right now and yeah, we're talking about outdoor activities, not, uh, anything indoor.
Okay. So when we see the phased in approach, we have to still balance it with what we have to do to provide services for our sidewalk programs, for our clerk's office, for our treasurer's office. Those are, those are important. Thank you.
Summer?
Thanks. Sorry, I had to get off mute. Um, so I, just to echo, um, on Michael's comments, um, for a second. I think Pat knows this, that I was extremely frustrated when I started getting emails from residents, um, accusing the board of, uh, making the decision to close, um, when we had not. So I think, you know, we could definitely have better communication around that. I think a lot of people who don't pay attention to these meetings, who just kind of hear things, assume when anything is done in Canton Township, it's a decision of the board and not that there's a leadership team out there that's making, um, some of these decisions, which I think, you know, we are a multi-million dollar organization. The board can't make every single decision. But I think for a lot of folks out there, they don't understand that sometimes when decisions gets made, it's not the board. Um, so I think, you know, making sure we tighten up communication on that, um, is important, especially when the board is going to be asked to respond to things. And, you know, when a decision as huge as reopening the township is made, the board is of course going to be asked to respond to that, whether positively or negatively. Um, so I think it's important to make sure that we get all of that information when decisions are made, um, in a timely way. Um, Will, not to pick on you, because I think you've done an excellent job over these last few weeks, but you said something and it's, it, it, it kind of struck me. You said, nobody's going to get out of here alive. And I get that, but I personally know 11 people that have passed away due to COVID, including a 23-year-old and including a father and a son. So like, I know that like, we can't play big brother to the world, but this is, you know, something that I've never had that happen in my 43 years on this planet. So it's something that I struggle with. Um, and it's been a really difficult few months for me personally. Um,
I'm sorry, in summer, I didn't mean to, to dis- discount any life. And as I said, one life is too many. So I, I didn't mean any disrespect by that. I just merely meant, you know, none of us are coming off this planet alive. We're all going to die of something, whether it's COVID or something else. But I, I meant no disrespect by that. So I apologize.
Yeah, I, I, I do appreciate that. Um, and, uh, you know, I listened to the governor speak today. Um, and she said that she wasn't ready to move the state to the next phase, um, because there was some data coming in that we needed to reevaluate. There were, I believe, 14 people, um, at a restaurant bar in Lansing, um, who were diagnosed with COVID after visiting that restaurant. So, you know, I, I listen to stories like that and because of everything that I've experienced over the last few months, my instinct is to be more cautious because, you know, I, I still think that there's a ton that we do not know about this virus. Um, Greg, just for clarification, I was trying to find the governor's executive order, but it's kind of hard to look on the website to see, you know, which one is active, which one has been rescinded. Um, but can you clarify for me, um, how many people are currently allowed in an outdoor venue?
Currently, I believe it's 100.
Okay.
That's correct.
Um, and, and, and indoor venue, like a theater, how many people are currently allowed?
Ken.
Okay. Um, is it possible for the board of trustees to get a copy of the survey that was sent out so we can look at it for our own, um, purposes as we continue these conversations? Yeah, the summit one.
Sure.
Okay. Um,
So you, I think I said.
You sent it? Okay. I may have missed it. I may have missed it that you might have been flying. And then, um, finally, um, so Greg, I know we're not there yet and I know that you're thinking about this for the next phase moving after. after October the first, when we open the summit. But just for my own purposes, how are you thinking about sanitizing like the gym equipment and things like that after October?
Sure, we have. No, we have back during the last flu outbreak, probably four years ago, I can't remember which outbreak it was. We actually purchased a, I can't remember the name of the piece of equipment, but it was like an atomizer that sprays disinfectant, and we've been using that on all the police cars, the police station, ambulances, not ambulances, I don't think. Several different locations. So we have that piece of equipment available, and we've actually ordered a couple others that we'll have on hand, and it's actually fairly simple to go through. It's like a backpack and a hose, and you just spray it on the equipment and let it dry, and that does the sanitizing. And it's actually safe for electronics and those sorts of things as well. We've actually been been using that same piece of equipment for the past four years as general sanitizing.
How long does a spray last? Just curious. Like when you spray it, like how long does it, do you have to do it like so many times a day or how does that work?
Yeah, we would have to, well, it would, it's just like any sanitizer, once you spray it on, it would kill what's there, but it's not going to prevent any future contamination. So if if we spray it, once it's dry, it's no longer effective. So if we sprayed a piece of equipment and it dried and killed whatever whatever was there, and somebody else came along and coughed on it after that point, then it would then need to be re sanitized. So those are the types of things we have to figure out if and when we do open the summit based on the risk levels. There's facilities that are looking at, we've considered, do we have reservation times? Like you could come work out from, you know, 10 to 11 today, and then we're going to clear everyone out, have a half hour break to go sanitize, and then our next group would be 11:30 to 12:30. Those are all different options. We, it's really hard to plan for until we know what the restrictions are, the risk levels are at that time. But those are the different models that we're reviewing for when that time comes.
Okay, and I know that there are capacity limits right now on indoor pools. Are there capacity limits for outdoor pools and splash pads? I know we don't have an outdoor pool. I'm just curious.
50%.
Okay, 50%.
Whatever the designated capacity is.
Okay, and so is there a way that we could limit capacity on the splash pad currently? Or is that not something that we've considered?
Post signage. Really, we would have a couple of different options for doing something like that. You could post signage and ask people to self-police, similar to what we're doing with the playgrounds right now. We don't have any way to control capacity there. We have signs that say, you know, it's use at your own risk, basically, and practice self-social distancing. The other option, which would be an expensive option, would be to put some sort of temporary fencing up and staff it. But I don't think that would be a realistic or feasible option, but that would be the only real way to actually control that use.
Okay.
Or another goofy solution might be, if you've seen some of the bars out in California, where they put hoops around people or tires, inner tubes, and each of the little kids who have a, you know, four-foot diameter inner tube when they go in. Be adorable, but.
That would be funny, actually. Thank you very much, Wendy. And Greg, I know you worked extremely hard preparing this for the board, and I know that you've been doing it with limited staff, so I do appreciate you doing this and taking the time to explain your thoughts around this to us. So that's all. Thank you.
If I may, just real quickly, I am the only adult in my household, and I have a baby that is sleeping. So if I, if you see me intermittently leave, that is because I'm attending to the baby, which also means I might not be able to read any future motions. This, I did not anticipate this meeting was going to go two hours and 15 minutes before we even get to an agenda item. So I just want to let you all know, if I have to leave intermittently, it's because Jack woke up.
Got it. Additional board comment? Greg, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on a couple of things that Michael had said there, just a couple of clarifications. I wanted to make sure to be clear that, unfortunately, he just took off too. But I do, I do want to make it clear that we're not making a recommendation at this point to change anything. I just want the board to know that we are ready and able, if and when the board does make a decision to change right now, all of our plans are for August 1st. If the board changes that, we're certainly able to do that. But I'm not disputing any of the dates that the, what has been decided. And then when it comes to outdoor activities and those sorts of things that can be done safely, outdoor events, outdoor fitness classes right now. We are also in a situation where obviously our staff is being furloughed, so they're only working two days a week right now. And the majority of our staff is working those two days at the golf course in order to keep our part-time wages low right there, so they are not in the office. If they are in the office, they're only working one day. So it's very difficult for them to, number one, come up with any programs and facilitate any registration process for those programs. And number two, all of our instructors for those programs, especially fitness instructors, are all part-time employees, and all those have been laid off at this point. So if we want to make the decision to modify those types of things, then we certainly can and would be happy to do outdoor activities, but we just have not had the resources to do that. So that's not a, not something that we've just had the resources to do at this point.
Stephen. Admit it yourself.
Yeah, no, I, I wanted to permanently unmute myself. So I guess each department, because I hear what Diane said before and Greg, what you're saying now. I think each, in my opinion, each department should be looking at, you know, what they possibly can do to serve the community in the capacity that they usually serve. And if there's changes that need to be made, of course, I don't know the ins and outs of our union contracts and who gets to be brought back, and if one group gets brought back, what it means for another group to be brought back. But I, I think the intent always, in my mind, was that when we shut the township down and then agreed with our different unions to do furlough days and vacation days, and then work, part-time workdays and things like that, that eventually that that would end. And so if there are necessary services, and I do believe leisure services is a necessary service, along with, of course, the things that Diane, you mentioned, that a proposal should be put forward by the head of the department to say, we could do this. I would like to propose that we do this and bring back, you know, instead of two furlough days, one furlough day, or whatever the ins and outs are of it, so that we can ensure that we are starting to deliver services. And the other part of that is, you know, August 1st, I'm not sure what the difference is between, I understood the fall league thing. And so I understand that, but I don't know, is there some benefit to doing it July 15th? Because to me, it's more about the monitoring, the reporting, ensuring that the protocols are being followed, not when we do it. So if, if, if Greg, you have, you know, some, something that could benefit the community and and they agree to do it in a way that is safe via these protocols and not just say that they're going to do it and then not do it, and we monitor that. And if there's a cost to monitoring that, you know, spot checking or whatever, then so be it. So, so that, that was just my thoughts. I mean, obvious, unless someone is putting forward a motion to change what what the core team put forward a few weeks ago, it doesn't look like we're changing anything. But if there were things to tweak, like the Village Theater, I don't, I, I, obviously, it's an indoor venue. We have to be extremely careful. A couple of weeks ago, one of the employees said she's nervous about it. So we have to be mindful of our employees. There are people too and can get sick. But if there's a way to do recording of a performance and there's no dressing rooms, you come in dressed and, you know, you, we can record a performance and the performance is done in a socially distanced way somehow, I don't know. That's possible. I mean, there was one email from Ms. Bloom that on Spotlight on Youth, and she had some good points on protocols. But she also said it's possible that there will be moments of less than social distancing, which concerned me. So, you know, if if you saw that it's possible to be able to do that or opening up, like we said, amphitheaters for performances, that Ms. Ash said some would work and some wouldn't, then great. So that's all, that, that's just my thoughts on it, and I'll stop talking now.
All good points and all valid. Jade?
Yeah, I apologize that I'm going to make the meeting go a little bit longer, but it's been brought up a couple of times about the services that we're offering to the residents and some of the very basic services that we're offering. And I just wanted to speak from the Municipal Services Department that from an engineering standpoint, building and standpoint, inspection and DPW, we're monitoring our activity on a daily basis for what we need to do to continue the service. And I know I've worked with Diane. We've talked about water billing a few times. We're getting that back in place because one of the risks that we had is, you know, going into the homes to fix some of the things within the water department, but we are working on that. But we're, we're monitoring this on a daily basis and working with human resources. And, you know, shout out to Corinne and her staff because when this workshare program is pretty, it's, it's, it's unique, and it can be very advantageous for the township. But at the same time, it has some flexibility in it that allows us to bring our staff back. So right now, our building department and engineering department and inspection services department is coming back one week full-time and then one week back on the workshare program. Next week, all DPW employees are coming back for that third day as opposed to the flip-flopping three days, two days. So we're constantly monitoring the activity that's coming in and the workload that's coming in. The managers are a little, you know, they're overwhelmed as we all are. We're working with shortened staff. But I think at the end of the day, we have to look out for the good of the township and make sure that we're adhering to the programs that, that everybody agreed to. But, you know, if there's ever any questions about some of the basic services that are being offered and the delivery method, I know later tonight in the meeting, we're going to be approving, hopefully, you're going to be approving the contracts for the roads if we get there. And that's going to bring another level of, of man, of oversight that we have to do. So that's going to change the engineering department's layout. So, but I just, I want to encourage anyone that has any specific questions about other services, please reach out to me, please call me. You know, so I can, I can answer any of those questions, but I just wanted to make that because it came up a couple of times. So I just want to be clear that we're doing other weekend, and our staff truly is, you know, they're not all on the workshare program on a, on a continual weekly basis.
Yeah, if I may too, you know, Jade, because, you know, we, I've been very concerned, and I told you right upfront, you know. I took the roads program on as like my own little baby early on. I was very sincere when we went to the community because they had seen a lot of pretty bad concrete work done on Canton's on a road, and we told them, we're not going to allow that kind of work to be done with this local roads program. And I, like our contractors, they've been great so far. The work they've done has been, has been good. I like our, the engineering firms that we're working with, our consultant that we're working with, they're great too. But I'm also, by my very nature, suspicious. I'm suspicious of contractors because I believe, you know, you trust and verify. I'm also suspicious of your consultants as well because I know there are times when they're going to want to use interns as opposed to engineers on some things. And I think it's really important that you follow up and you create oversight. And I was very concerned about the workshare program. And like, are we being penny wise and pound foolish? Are we saying we want to save $50,000 here or there, but at the end of the day, what it might amount to is putting in a couple million dollars worth of bad concrete? That's what terrified me. When we spoke, you alleviated any concerns I had over that happening. And I love the, the way HR set up the workshare program. We can go in, you can go out, you can go to full-time if you need to. But I would just again echo to the entire team here, the Board Trustees, that there will be consequences to continuing to furlough the organization going forward, especially if we're going to be open to the public, which we currently are. And if we're going to expand how open we are to the public as well. You know, currently, we're only at five hours, three days a week. And that will get more challenging as things go. But anyway, I appreciate your follow-through, Jade, on that.
Additional comments or questions? Greg, please.
Just really quickly, someone mentioned, I think it may have been Wendy, that we were having the CIP conversation soon. Do we have the dates up for that yet?
14th, July 14th.
Yeah, we're planning on doing that before our regular board meeting on the 14th. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Greg, any closing comments before we move on to the regular agenda?
The only comment, only suggestion, as we just kind of had a quick discussion among staff, is if there was any appetite for doing a test case with just doing GCYBSA programs and allowing them to run programs at a certain point prior to August 1st at all, or just keeping it close all till August 1st?
How about we allow offline conversation to occur? And we'll circle back to you because right now, August 1st is the day. Unless there's strong opinions right now amongst the trustees. What Greg's asking is have a single group come back. This is baseball, youth baseball?
Yeah, yeah, youth baseball.
As, as a test case, to see if the guidelines can be adhered to and followed by an outside group who is a partner in a lot of different areas. Any immediate opinions or does folks want to think about it overnight?
So, and that is with like the modified rules, like they're not tagging each other, they're not touching each other, they've changed the gameplay. They're not, there's no, there's no, you talked about, right?
That was for, that was for adults also, so they would still be tagging in youth for the, I guess, for the youth, Michigan Youth Baseball Association has the regulation, the protocols that they put out would that they would be tagging for the youth.
Within six feet of each other, which would be a violation. That'd be a violation of Michigan State law or not? Right? Because I, and that would be a violation of the CDC guidelines because they do say if you're going to open up, you need to be six feet away from each other at all times, and if you can't do that, then you should figure out a way to play independently, which is scrimmage, play by yourself, right? So they would by their own volition not be following the CDC guidelines or the executive order from the governor? To other sports.
Well, she did allow youth sports and baseball as one of those, but I mean, that's.
Provided they felt, but that was provided they continue six feet, just total distancing, right? Tagging is contact. That's not six feet. Or is she in contact now? I, because I.
No, the, the high contact sport. I could prove, I could get you, I, I don't have the, the specific youth baseball regulations in front of me right now, so I could pull those and provide those to, to the board tomorrow.
Let's do that. Greg, please.
And we also get the latest copy of the executive order too.
I also know that they're practicing up at the high schools for some of the fall sports, but the contact sports are all doing six-foot distancing. They're doing runs and workouts, but they're not doing the actual contact.
We'll get that sent out to the board tomorrow, both items. Okay, any additional comments, questions, statements? All right, I think that'll close our study session. Can we now move into the general calendar and item, open up with item G0, which is a resolution regarding racism? And item, open up with item G zero, which is a resolution regarding um racism. And Summer Foster was going to lead us through that.
Yeah. Were we going to do more comments at the end of the study session? I think we talked about
It's probably a good idea to do that. Thank you, Anne Marie, because as we move into the rest of the board agenda, I don't expect to be any public comment, maybe, but um, Michael, can you, can you see if there's any raised hands out there for additional public comment at this time? Kind of close out because generally what we do is we have the public comment, the board discusses with staff, then we move on. Reopening the public comment, I don't know if that'll add value and that kind of breaks with what we've been doing.
Star nine or whatever you said it was for a phone?
Right.
Yeah, due to the oddness and surrealness of this higher Zoom environment we're in, my feelings not hurt if there's another, you know, strong public calendar wants to be made right now. Here, but I, I think we're ready to move on.
Okay, thanks.
Or contact the trustees tomorrow. Yeah, that's an option too. We're all available. Um, so moving on G zero, resolution of regarding racism, Summer Foster, trustee Foster.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that we pass a resolution, that we adopt the following resolution regarding systemic racism. Support.
You'll read and then we vote? Michael, correct process, yep.
Resolution regarding systemic racism, whereas Canton Township is a growing multiracial and ethnically diverse community, whereas the township's population boom began in the nineteen seventies and is partially credited to white flight at the possibility of inter-district busing where deep black Detroit rest students cross city borders to attend schools in the suburbs and vice versa, leading to the nineteen seventy-four U.S. Supreme Court case known as Milliken versus Bradley. Most of the region's busing stopped short of integrating our school district. Whereas in two thousand eleven, the Canton Response to Hate Crimes Coalition was formed by the Police Department to partner with community groups, schools, faith-based organizations and the community, committed to educating our citizens about bias-motivated incidents and/or hate crimes, to respond in support of the victims and the community and to mentor both victims and perpetrators during the healing process. Whereas the Board of Trustees passed an equal rights ordinance protecting those who live, work and play in the township from discrimination based on race, religion, sexual orientation and gender identity in two thousand and fourteen. Whereas the Board of Trustees passed a welcoming resolution to assure that all residents, to assure all residents that we stand with them against hate and discrimination in March two thousand and seventeen. Whereas in two thousand eighteen, Leisure Services launched the You Belong Here initiative as part of the commitment to honoring diversity, inclusion and equity while remaining dedicated to a mission that promotes a spirit of mutual respect, feelings of belonging and a greater sense of community for all of our neighbors. Whereas George Floyd, a black man, died at the hands of four Minneapolis, Minnesota police officers on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty, and the Board of Trustees is disgusted by the vision of a police officer kneeling on a subdued man's neck for eight minutes and forty-six seconds as other officers witnessed his pleas for help and were ignored by the very people who are trained to help and assist. Whereas Canton Township's Deputy Director of Police Chadwick Ba issued a statement that the Canton Township Police Department stands against injustice and is sickened by the action and inaction of police officers in the death of George Floyd. Whereas the Board of Trustees is also disgusted by the knowledge this was not an isolated incident in America. Not the number of names and similar experiences is inconso, incon, incontinuously long and is an undeniable part of the history of this nation, that Black Lives Matter and other organizations that stand, stand for civil and human rights have organized hundreds of thousands of people from all nationalities, ethnic and racial backgrounds, all walks of life to protest, march and rally to mourn Mr. Floyd's death and express their outrage with the social injustice of systemic racism that has led to the deaths of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, Tony McDade and so many more. Whereas the statement requires being said affirmatively and with real compassion that violence of this nature is yet another blow to black and brown people, particularly African-American men who are often told by our culture that they do not matter. Whereas it is the duty of elected officials to, to use their legal and moral authority to protect all members of the community and foster a community free of fear, intimidation and violence, a community in which people are not targeted or hurt unnecessarily by law enforcement and provided equal protection under the law. Whereas this tragedy pours, pushes the Board of Trustees to reflect on its own practices, behavior and attitudes to question, to question whether it's doing enough, being vigilant enough, is it fostering a true culture of respect and honesty? The Board of Trustees calls upon all residents to join in the commitment to introspective evaluation. Whereas to be silent is complicit and everyone shares a duty to the community to speak out against institutional racism, systemic oppression, and whereas black lives matter, now therefore so be it, resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Charter Township of Canton hereby extends its condolences to Mr. Floyd's family and friends and all who grieve his death, offering its thoughts to countless members of the community who have been personally impacted as well. Further resolved, the Board of Trustees stands with thousands in America around the world who have engaged in peaceful protests to call for an end to the social injustice and systemic racism, racism that permeates the fabric of the country. Further resolved that the Board of Trustees urges law enforcement leaders and other local governments to join in denouncing the actions of the Minneapolis police officers and review and reform their policies on the duty to intervene, the use of force, recruitment and officer training, including bias, de-escalation, language and cultural sensitivity and mental health. Further resolved that in the aftermath of this tragedy, Canton Township reaffirms its commitment to the larger goal, goals of accountability and justice and further resolve that racial and ethnic diversity is woven into the fabric of the community, yet much more can and must be done to make Canton a more inclusive community. Canton must work to ensure it is a place where racism does not exist in any place or form and all leaders must reach out, listen and learn from each other to identify where change is possible and how to bring it about.
Very good. Thank you, Summer. Those in favor of the motion as presented?
Aye.
Foster?
Yep.
Aye.
And Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seaverston, aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Sineben?
Been so long since I voted on something. I forgot how to do it, but I'll say aye.
Williams?
Aye. Motion carries. Item G one, request renewal of Dell support for critical core equipment. Network equipment. Michael, yeah, there you go.
Oh, yeah, I'm just, I'm having issues getting to my packet, so I'm going to be using the public packet. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase order in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand ninety-eight dollars payable to Dell Computers Incorporated for renewal of software support and maintenance services provided by Dell Computers Incorporated covering a period of three years.
Support.
In summary, IT Services requested permission to renew our hardware services and support agreement with Dell Computers, which expired February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. Dell utilizes Dell Computers networking products to provide access for all computer and printing devices in all township facilities. Most critical switches located in the admin's public safety data centers provide master connectivity to all other equipment switches installed across facilities are critical to maintaining access to computer printer, voice over IP phone systems. This three-year support contract will provide for four-hour response from Dell should one of the pieces of equipment fail. And this request is in line with other mission-critical networking equipment such as township firewalls. Any questions for Director Trumbull on this topic? Seeing none, uh, voice roll call?
Trustee Foster?
Aye.
Trustee Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seaverston, aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Sineben?
Aye.
Uh, Williams?
Aye. Item G two, consider approval of Microsoft Office two thousand and nineteen upgrades.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve a purchase of three hundred and fifty licenses for Microsoft Office two thousand and nineteen and about not to exceed one hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars.
Support.
Very good. October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, Microsoft will event Office two thousand and thirteen. The township's current Office productivity suite and connecting to Microsoft three sixty-five product. The township utilizes Microsoft three sixty-five for email services with the great majority of employees utilizing Microsoft Office, oh, I'm sorry, Microsoft Outlook to access their email. Employee productivity would be negatively impacted if access to their email and calendar was restricted to the web browser version of Microsoft three sixty-five. IT Services now requesting purchase for your contract for the current version of Microsoft standard two thousand and nineteen PC license in an effort to reduce our annual costs. The contract cost is currently being, is currently budgeted in the IT Services software account. Any questions for trustee Trumbull or, I'm sorry, representative? Wow, getting sleepy. Director Trumbull, Anne Marie. Uh, unmute Anne Marie.
Sorry, this is a software that's going to require that double identification, correct, when this comes in?
Um, not to my knowledge, this is just to keep our existing um Outlook um utilizing it through the Microsoft products. Otherwise, we'd have to go to the web browser through the internet because Microsoft is no longer supporting the Office two thousand and thirteen product. So um, to my knowledge, that is not the case yet. But I would have to actually to be positive.
Does this allow more people to be able to utilize the VPN and work remotely?
This is just to use the um Microsoft Office suite with on our current computers.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, uh, roll call vote?
See Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seaverston, aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Sineben?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Item G three, consider approval of hoop house donation to be located at Preservation Park.
Supervisor, I move to allow the supervisor, yourself, to sign the agreement accepting the donation by the fallen wounded soldiers of a hoop house located Preservation Park to the Charter Township of Canton.
Support.
Okay, in terms of background, the fallen wounded soldiers are currently leasing the veterans dormitory where they offer programs and provide support to veterans. Dormitory services as a, as a residence for four to six veterans struggling with housing and those who need supportive environment in the Detroit metro area. Program provides services they need to establish permanent housing, become gainfully employed. The donated hoop house is valued at twenty-eight hundred dollars, which will give gardening opportunities for veterans while providing exposure to the farmer's market. The addition of the hoop house will also allow veterans to grow food for an extended two months past the growing season. This will allow veterans to learn to work together and produce their own food while contributing sustainability of their residents by defraying food costs. Veterans will be able to learn from the gardeners club while increasing their opportunities to engage in the camp community. All extra food will be donated to support the local food banks and any ongoing maintenance of the hoop house will be done by Canton Township staff. Are there any questions for Director Olenberger? Go ahead, Steve.
Um, so isn't, there is one there already? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So this is the second one. Great.
This one would be about half the size directly adjacent to it on the north side of the current one.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And no further comments or questions. Those in favor of the motion, roll call vote?
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seaverston, aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Sineben?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Item G four, consider award a contract to asphalt specialists in the two thousand and twenty asphalt local road village improvements and consider award of a contract to Spalding D-Decker for continued engineering and consultation work on the road village improvements.
In the form of two motions, Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve to asphalt specialists incorporated for a total and a contract for a total of six hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and three.
Support.
Twenty eighteen, a one point four five mil road funding village was approved by the voters for the road work, including repairs local subdivision roads. This contract award was the first local road subdivision asphalt portion of that project. In two thousand and eighteen, Spalding D-Decker assisted in the engineering services evaluated preparing, scoping and designing and provided construction engineering. Um, I think most of the trustees are, were maybe not aware about a week ago, for about five minutes, this program was going to implode and not going to happen this year. Um, but thankfully, uh, Lauren Evans reversed his staff's direction and the, we're back on, so we are doing road work this year. Um, the other piece of the tie, but not directly, is your major roads permits. Jade, did we get them in today?
Uh, no, can, can I just explain?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so um, in January, uh, the award, the bid came before you to approve for the cement portion of the major, of the local road projects, and that was approved. That's going to complete eleven of the subdivisions and associations that, that, that were approved out of the twenty-nine. And this is to approve for the six that have asphalt within their subdivisions. So that brings us up to the seventeen is what, which is what we had talked about last year during the budget process. So um, the remaining twelve will be in the two thousand and twenty-one project, which will come next year. We received the asphalt permit for this from the county last week and we actually just received the cement portion permit today. So all local projects are a go. I will take this real quick opportunity just to let you know that I am still working with the county because we do not have the permit for the major roads yet for those major projects. That is something that I'm diligently working on and I think that is what supervisor you're referring to is that we're in constant communication with them because they've had our submittal since late, late winter, early spring. Um, and I know COVID delayed everything, but we have been diligently on the phone and working with Bev Watts and County Exec to get this permit um up and running. I'm definitely looking at creating a streamlined process next year. This is my first year going through this process and definitely some flaws in the way that this is being approved and the way that we can move forward in the future. So definitely looking to create a much more streamlined process going into two thousand and twenty-one.
Additional comments or questions for Jade? Michael?
I just have a question, Jade. It's not germane to this item, but we're talking about roads. A statement was made that we have yet to receive the county's financial obligation for ridge road paving. Is that still the case? Um, do we know when that payment's going to come through? Is that going to impact whether or not we can get that work done? And do we have a plan if we don't receive payment from the county for their portion of that road? Uh, what do we?
Yeah, so, so that, that's interesting topic that we probably could talk at length about. Um, the way that the IGA was written, um, there is some debate within the IGA itself as to how we're supposed to be receiving that money and Wendy is, is aware of this as well. Um, the county has a practice in the past of actually reimbursing the township after the work has been completed. That's not quite the way that the IGA reads. So unfortunately, the township is in a position to um, to move forward with the work and we have the funds available to do it. When, if you recall, um, about six months ago, we actually amended the IGA to extend it through construction year two thousand and twenty-one and reaffirmed with the county that the money is there. So we are going to get the money as soon as the project is complete, which should be this fall. And I'm not sure, but I built, uh, Bill Surcheck was on the call as a participant tonight if, if you wanted to get any feedback from him. But in regards to the reimbursement of the one point nine million dollars for ridge road, we will be receiving that um at the end of this year, um, once that project is complete. And of course, that project was delayed as well due to COVID and because of the shutdown. But um, they are back out and working, so hopefully we can get that expedited and move a little quicker.
Anne Marie? Unmute.
Thank you. So um, we, they've worked on a couple other projects for us and so we haven't had any issues with this, with Spalding, right? All their punch lists are closed and all their projects were completed on time.
Yes, Spalding's been wonderful to work with. Bill can probably attest to it more than I have. He has a much, he has a lengthier history with them. Um, I know that they do do work for um the county as well, so they have a good rapport with the county. So between us calling them and emailing them every day, Spalding D-Decker is exactly right on our tail, on our, on our heels following up as well. So we're well represented, well represented with them um in pushing these projects forward.
Thank you.
No other, okay, Summer, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, so Jade, when do you think that um we will be able to um begin construction? And I know last year there was an effort to wrap up construction before school started and the buses were out there. And granted, we don't know what's happening with school this year, but how long do you think this construction season will last?
Yeah, this construction season is probably going to go as long as the weather will permit. Um, obviously, there's no way that we're going to be able to complete construction before school starts because of the delay, because of COVID. So we'll do our best to work with the school district and with the contracts to mitigate any sort of traffic, you know, concerns that we have and, and, and work in, in those areas. We can only do so much, but we We can only do so much, but we will absolutely work to the best of our ability to, to get that done and, and work with the schools on that.
Jade, I'm on too, this is Bill.
Hi, Bill.
Uh, Summer, we, uh, we had, uh, uh, a weekly con- conversation with the school district when we were working last year and we know their transportation folks very well, so we anticipate that again provided they start i- in September.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, uh, those in favor, roll call vote of the first motion, roll call.
Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Sineben?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Second emotion?
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve, uh, contract to Spalding D-Decker for a total award of five hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
Support.
Thank you, uh, roll call vote?
Uh, Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Seagrist?
Aye.
Slavens?
Aye.
Sineben?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
That concludes our formal business for this evening, I do see that it looks like there was a question or something asked. And Michael, I don't know if there's any additional public comment. We did say we'd make a call for public comment one more time. Is there any public comment? Is there any public comment? If you would like to make a comment, please raise your hand, or if you're on a cell phone, was it star nine?
Correct, star nine.
The, the one question that's out there, I don't know if that's even ours to respond to. Uh, somebody's asked the question, and I don't know, Greg, if you want to try to field this, how is Plymouth doing baseball and other sports if it's against the executive order? I don't, Greg, I, that's a question from the township or city of Plymouth.
Yeah, that's difficult, I know, um. From, from my understanding of the governor's orders is that baseball is an approved outdoor activity at this point. I know my son is playing in Celine, um, and several other, um, locations are doing it, but I can't speak to Plymouth's logic or their thought process.
That's fair, and so let's, when you send out the information tomorrow to the group as requested, then we'll go a little deeper later. Um, is there any other public comment, Michael, that you saw? Hands raised.
See no hands raised.
Okay, is there any, uh, closing comments any of the staff would like to make? I don't see, Chad, I did forward out your note that we had a, a very safe and, uh, peaceful protest that, uh, that is concluded, correct?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much, I just, you know, for the audience, I just want everyone to know, you know, we support the First Amendment we support safety, we get questions from time to time, and our police officers support the First Amendment and the entire constitution. Um, our ability to support these protests and our ability to listen and our ability to be open to reform is critical to our continued success. And I know some of the audience and some of the questions we get in our dispatch center is why do we, um, support and provide this safety mechanism for people protesting? And I just encourage anybody in the audience to check out the ACLU website. It's, uh, it's, it's near perfect when it comes to understanding how to protest and how to do it safely, so with that, thank you for your support.
Any additional board comments?
Just make a brief comment about the election, which is coming up, a full steam ahead, we are in the process of packaging ballots, we are underway, putting out a, a large number, larger than we ever have, and those will be in people's mailboxes uh, prior to the Fourth of July weekend, so keep an eye out for those, that'll give you some time, a month or so, to look over those choices and make those choices. Again, I recommend dropping those ballots off as opposed to mailing them, that ensures they will be returned. Uh, we have a drop box in the back, uh, of Township Hall, uh, attached to the building, and ideally by the end of this week, we will have a drive-up drop box out back, which will be patriotic, it will have a classic, uh, flag uh, design, it's quite, quite lovely, and there will be social media blitz courtesy of Amy Hamilton, and, uh, very grateful, uh, for, for her participation in that, to try to let people know, um, that we have that option.
One other quick comment for myself, and then I'll wrap things up here, is Conference of Western Wayne um, has partnered with, uh, Western Wayne County Communities, the N double A C P and all the local police departments. And they're, they're putting together what they call partnerships for progress, a listening tour of Western Wayne County. Um, tomorrow night, there's an event in Livonia, which I believe has been fully booked out. Um, but there is going to be noon twenty-fourth, an event, uh, that's tomorrow. Uh, in August thirteenth, uh, there's going to be an event at Inkster's Recreation Center. Uh, more information is available at Conference of Western Wayne's website, and, um, there's a commitment to move these listening tours around Conference of Western Wayne. So at some point in the future, Canton, Canton Township will be a, a host community as well with the N double A C P. Um, that's all I've got, uh, call for a motion to close.
So move.
Back in.
It was in favor, by roll call vote?
So Foster?
Aye.
Graham Hudek?
Aye.
Aye, Slavens?
Aye.
Sineben?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
That concludes our formal business tonight, let's have a good night, everybody be safe.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye, everybody.